Get us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Naomi and Aande. Will you come up and lead the pledge?
Did they know that was coming?
It kind of, okay.
You can just, yeah, stand right there. And then when you start talking, we'll all start talking with you, okay?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Awesome.
Thank you both so much. Okay, moving on, we have Reagan Parson for Town Manager's Comments.
Thank you, Mayor Clement. In short, you have one item for action this afternoon, being a written decision on a preliminary plat that you approved at the last regular business meeting. And then there are two items under Updates and Discussion that may result in some code language for your March meeting, or it may not, but that being 5B and 5E. Otherwise, everything this afternoon is along the lines of Updates and Discussion, a lot of preliminary stuff that will lend itself toward budget as we move through the next couple of months. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions or just turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Any questions?
I'd love to make a really quick comment because I've been waiting for Mike Cameron to be with us. So it's been a long time, and I've broken a kneecap since this happened, but that's all fixed. But I want to let you know that I went over to the Halloween Trick or Treat in West Southern Pines, where the fire department was lovely. They were there, and I got a chance to talk with them about their trip to the mountains to help in western North Carolina. And I was blown away by how much they did, but I was most blown away by the fact that they took initiative along with other people from across the state. And the fire chief up there didn't ask for the help, but they realized that his basement was full of sludge, and they went and dug it out, just on their own initiative. And it made me so proud. But then intervening into that situation was the fact that I nearly fainted at the event, and they kicked it into action. And my blood pressure was checking, and everything was checked. And ultimately, I was sent home, which was great. But they were lovely, and they were responsible. And I don't know that the town understands the effort that was put in from Southern Pines, particularly from the fire department, and just a huge hurrah for them. Ultimately, just to add, it was like a hat trick. First, they kept me from dying. The second, they cleaned out the western North Carolina. But then they asked about smoke alarms. And I will say that smoke alarms were purchased from my house shortly before my husband passed away. They had never been put up. And so later that afternoon, the fire department appeared at my house and put in fire alarms. So I have waited to see you to make that statement, but I could not be more proud to be from Southern Pines. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to all of them. It was great to see them all, and they were lovely. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. We look forward to seeing what you all come up with as a recognition for the people who helped. We really appreciate your department stepping up when needed. Okay, moving on to action items. We have the written decision for Bethesda Road preliminary plat. I will quickly say thank you to Mayor Pro Tim Pate for running the meeting two weeks ago in my absence. I will ask, I guess, if you all have any, since I was not part of that meeting, any questions or feedback on the written decision? No?
I've already told BJ thank you for reaching out to the applicant to let them review this written decision prior to coming before us. And that's contained in the notes that they did that. I appreciate that.
Okay. Are you all ready for a motion?
Yes, I'm moved to approve the written decision for MAPP-05-24.
Second.
By saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Council Updates and Discussion. We are fortunate to have former council member, former mayor, former county commissioner Frank Quist here with us with an update on the county land use plan. Frank, if you'd like to join us up at this microphone.
Don't worry about my comments today and the thickness of this book have nothing...
This will be...
Stone unturned.
It will be a five-hour meeting.
And I will say thank you before you begin. Thank you for everything you've done in service to the county and specifically to Southern Pines. We appreciate still having you working for us through this land use plan.
Well, thank you very much. I've enjoyed it, and I appreciate you all allowing me to be your representative. But, Madam Mayor, council members, thanks for letting me give you a brief report and update. But before I do, I want to, on a personal note, thank all of you for the very thoughtful input that you've given to the Bethesda Road property and this Hunt Cliff development. I don't know all the details, but I live in that area, and I'm just pleased that it's going to be developing in a similar manner. And it sounds like you're protecting the trees that you can and so forth. So I really appreciate that, as does my wife. So a quick update on the progress with our Moore County Land Use Plan. And I do want to emphasize, it's Moore Counties Plan. You all have your own comprehensive plan. So we talk about things that you all would not, wouldn't consider. But just a brief history. We had three public hearings last year at three different high schools. And the public turned out probably a little over 100 speakers between all three locations. And almost everyone speaking. And they were all very, very passionate and thoughtful, wanted to see the county tap the brakes on growth. That's my term. Well, no, tapping the brakes is a challenge for Southern Pines and any municipality, and it's no different for the county. Actually, it may be more different because we have many different individuals with different needs in a much larger area. So those three meetings did give us a lot of input. But through the establishment of the Steering Committee, which is comprised of 32 members, it's facilitated by Robert Hyder, I think you all know Robert, and Larry Vest. Larry lives just outside of Southern Pines and started Land Design, which is based in Charlotte and is a national, and actually an international consulting firm for land use. So these two gentlemen really know their stuff and are great resources. A little more on the process. We started back in June of last year, having monthly meetings. Each meeting lasted two hours. We really stayed on schedule. The first few involved updates on various infrastructure in the county, just information that most people don't get, like you do. You get all the information about what's going on in Southern Pines, but our Steering Committee are comprised of representatives from different interests. And they just don't have that kind of information or knowledge. Talked about water resources, water and sewer in great detail, zoning, the effect of Fort Liberty as our neighbor just to the east. But Larry Vest presented some potential development concepts that were probably more suited for a municipality, but it's still got a good discussion going. We talked about conservation subdivisions, which in the county, it needs to be changed, modified, so that it's more usable, I'll put it that way. We will conclude our meetings next month. The last two months, we've been going over recommendations from the 2013 Moore County Land Use Plan. I want to mention just the five goals that guide this plan. They're probably very similar to Southern Pines. I think you have 10, what would you call it? 10 initiatives that guide your plan. So goal number one is preserve and protect the ambiance and heritage of the county of Moore, inclusive of areas around municipalities. Goal number two, enhance the union of the built and natural environments to improve citizen health through the use of open space and recreational opportunities. Three, optimize the uses of land within the county. And fourth, provide information and seek citizens' participation. Lastly, number five, accommodate for a variety of housing types. With each of these goals, there are numerous recommendations. And I'll give you just two or three examples. Goal number one, preserve and protect the ambiance and heritage. A recommendation was encourage the conservation of farmland for farming and forest land for forestry. Who could object to that? I mean, it's just apple pie. For the, enhance the union of the built and natural resources, a recommendation was promote the health and welfare of the county through collaborative planning efforts between the county and municipalities. Hopefully, that's going on. And one more, just optimize the uses of land within the county of Moore. Recommendation, assure an adequate quantity and quality of water available to support the desired growth of the county. Those goals have guided our committee. And after reviewing all these recommendations, and there are dozens and dozens of them after each one of these goals, we have recommended to our facilitators which ones we want to repeat, which ones we do not want to continue with, and ones that we might want to emphasize. Robert Hyder will distill the comments from various groups. I failed to mention, we were divided into groups of about six people in each group. So bit of a silo situation. So we're not so aware of what the other groups have suggested. But hopefully, next month, we'll have some good debate about these suggestions. And Mr. Hyder will then write his summary. And probably in April, we'll have the final product. So that should be good. There are two areas that I just want to finish on that I think are really critical and really were not discussed a great deal during our land use discussions. The ETJ question and the Highway Corridor Overlay District. In my opinion, these are both very important to Southern Pines. I looked at a map this morning of your ETJ, and gosh, it's probably 40% of the land that you're responsible for planning. Is that a fair percentage?
Oh, yeah.
It's huge. I mean, that's where you can grow. You're boxed in elsewhere. And we've had discussions with other municipalities over the last 18 months about preserving the ETJ. We had a meeting here, I believe, sitting as far back as I could and listened to Madam Mayor and a few other municipal representatives rip into Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Jackson, and a gentleman from Moss. Ben Moss, thank you. Very interesting to...
I appreciate that you were there for it. Whether you were an active participant or not, it was important for the county to see or to hear how everybody felt. So I appreciate you were here.
Well, thank you. Will that come up again this year, next year in the legislature? I'd say it's 50/50. But that, to me, is a very critical part of Southern Pines' future. And I hope, I do know that Mr. Vest and Mr. Hyder are both very understanding and very pro the continuation of the extraterritorial jurisdiction and have voiced that to some of our elected officials. One other, just comment about the ETJ. Almost all of it, perhaps all of it, falls within the Fort Liberty zoning overlay. 100%. Now, most people have never heard of the Fort Bragg zoning overlay, but it was established to protect lands adjoining military reservations, such as Fort Liberty. But they're pretty quiet, but they do care about what goes next door. And some recent subdivisions that have been under construction in the county have infringed on training operations. Not that they went on the land, but the military decided it's just not safe to train here this close to residential homes. So counties should have considered that. Then the Highway Corridor Overlay District. This is what really, you're all familiar with that, I believe. This is what separates us from looking like some towns to our east that haven't planned or don't care about how the highways that connect their smaller towns look, how they develop. We, and I do have and would be happy to share at a later date how this corridor is established here in Moore County. Really connects all the municipalities in the southern end and Carthage as well as Cameron. It doesn't connect Robbins. Highway 2427 is not a part of the corridor. But 211, US 1, 15501 up to Carthage, those are key roads. And how they look, how they develop, I think is a critical factor. We, I encourage you to talk to your commissioners because there's been talk of doing away with the Highway Corridor Overlay entirely. So I'm just urging caution for the ETJ, for the Highway Corridor. I don't have any imminent, oh, we're going to do this or that. And I'm trying to single anyone out, but...
Do you feel like the land use plan that's approved or that's final drafted in April may include changes to the Highway Corridor Overlay?
I don't think there'll be any changes.
Okay. But you think that it's something to at least keep a conversation open?
I can tell you that in our small group of six, we said we should strengthen the standards in the Highway Corridor Overlay District. How the other groups felt, I couldn't tell you. But it's probably not going to change at all. It's a fairly, where is it? I've lost it. It's about 12 pages of standards applying to 400 feet on each side of these main corridors. So I just urge you to pay close attention to the ETJ and the Highway Corridor. Hopefully, Senate Bill 232...
382.
...will be repealed. And you all can get back to your business. But that's my report. I've enjoyed working with the folks there on our Steering Committee. They've all added something of value to our effort. Do you all have any questions for me?
No, I will, before we get to questions, I will say I appreciate having you who understands, because you have very thorough knowledge of Southern Pines, be there to represent us because I think that you've got, besides a lot of history in town leadership, but you do stay, you're aware of the things that we're currently working towards. And so I appreciate having that voice in that conversation throughout the whole thing.
Thank you.
Do you all have questions?
I do. How many silos of people were there? You say it was a six-person committee, and...
Yeah, well, there were 32.
Okay. So you had about six groups, five or six groups. And what were they assigned? Were they all assigned to do the entire county? Or were there places that you were told to focus on, and then other silos were sent to other areas?
Well, each group looked at the same information. We were not assigned a particular task. So we got pretty much the same feedback from all. I mean, it's the same. But I don't, again, I don't know what the feedback has been other than what I've heard during discussions at our meetings. But I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, I think so. And Hyder's going to put all that together. And are you saying Larry's last name is with a B?
Yes.
As in, not related to Wayne Vest? Yeah, okay, got it. Okay, thank you. And you mentioned water and sewer as one of the focuses. Can you give me any background? I mean, when you say that, tell me what you understand is the focus and the objective, if you can. Is it to definitely increase infrastructure? Or is it to look at infrastructure and see whether or not there needs to be an expansion of water? And if so, why?
So we engaged LKC Engineering about a year and a half ago, two years maybe, to do a water study. And you're probably very familiar with their recommendations. You've seen the study. The question at the Land Use Planning Committee level was, well, how much do we want to grow? How much water do we need?
Right.
We provide five times more water than we really need. Do we encourage growth with more water, water lines, sewer lines extended different places in the county? A lot of folks said, let's really encourage development close to existing municipalities that have water and sewer, encourage major subdivisions and growth there. They will probably want it. They're prepared to handle it. And let's preserve some farmland in the county because not everybody wants to grow.
Right. Is there, I'm sorry, I cut you off. Go ahead.
So it's the old chicken or the egg when it comes to water. We do need to prepare. It's a responsibility of government. Reagan can certainly hopefully agree that we don't want to be caught short with a resource, which is good drinking water. So a lot of thought needs to be given to that. We are going to extend, the county will extend the sewer line out to Seven Lakes.
Okay.
Pinehurst. So that will become a growth corridor, take some water. Carthage is a bit short of water. They're growing rapidly. And this thing could become a real problem in five or 10 years.
So currently, the places to which water is supplied by the county include Pinehurst, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Will come to include Seven Lakes? Is that true, or is that not true?
County already...
Already serves Seven Lakes.
And they have septic systems.
And they're on septic system. So you're talking about putting a sewer line in order to address that. Robbins is on well, is that correct?
They have their own water plant.
So they have their own water plant?
Yes.
And we're not looking, under any circumstances, as that needing to connect back into the southern end of the county?
Correct. They, my understanding is Robbins wants to remain independent
Right.
and not connect to the county or have the county operate their system.
So the areas that you mentioned that you're concerned about are Seven Lakes. But you said that's sewer more than water because water's already connected. And then you also said other areas that, Carthage is also short on water. And in past, what has the county done in regard to the water supply for Carthage, if anything? Is most of Carthage on a well or not?
They have a small water plant. I'm not sure of the capacity, but the county has, there have been discussions over the years with Carthage about helping, but they're not at that point.
Okay. And you said that most of the people wanted you to, of the 100 speakers, what percentage would you say wanted you to tap the brakes in regard to development in the rural areas of the county?
95% plus.
Did you feel like that was a fair reflection of the population?
Small farmers represented, large farmers came out, regular citizens. A few from municipalities. When we had the first public hearing at Pinecrest High School, there were a number of folks from Southern Pines, Pinehurst there. Yeah, it was definitely biased towards limited growth or no growth.
And when you talked about a conservation subdivision, can you talk to me about what you mean by that? Can you define that for me?
Basically, it's a subdivision that requires the developer to set aside a percentage of land for public use, cannot be built upon. It allows a consideration for the builder to increase the density on the property. So if you're giving up 30%, here's a carrot to make it more affordable.
Okay.
That's a conservation subdivision, you know, with trails perhaps or buffers.
Okay. And then when you also mentioned development concepts, tell me what you were talking about there, if you could.
Small area plans, just some architectural renderings of various, various development ideas, you know. Varied.
Okay. And I know that you're following, you're tracking what we're doing, and I really appreciate your comments about Bethesda Road. And I'm assuming, the way I'm reading what you're saying is you are, and maybe this isn't fair. You tell me if this isn't fair, that you and your silo, if you will, are concerned about ETJ... that you and your silo, if you will, are concerned about ETJ coming out from under the jurisdiction of the towns. Is that correct? Is that a correct statement? Or are you trying really hard to not take a stand?
We have talked about the ETJ just a little bit during the whole course of the steering committee meetings.
So your comments today are a concern, that are a personal concern?
Personal concern, given what we've been through in the last two years. How important it is to Southern Pines. You're basically landlocked. But this ETJ you have is, is huge.
Right.
And so that, that's more of a personal observation. But, um, but the highway corridor is also important.
Okay. 400 feet is...
On each side of the highway.
Yeah, 400 feet on either side is pretty impressive. Thank you.
And that, of course, is outside any municipality's ETJ area.
Right, right.
Just county regal.
And I understand, and you spent far more years on the town council and serving as mayor in Southern Pines than I have spent. So I understand that you're incredibly cognizant of the ambiance that is Southern Pines and that that is embraced in a lot of the ETJ, specifically Horse Country. So when you talked about the collaboration to enhance the union of, of the built and natural resources, you specifically mentioned water again. Was that the only concern that came under that topic or were there...
No, 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 there were probably two, two or three dozen.
Okay. Okay.
Which gave you one, just a sample of what a typical recommendation might be, but a, you know, relevant and important recommendation.
So what, in, in a sentence or two, what is your sense of moving forward in regard to, specifically in regard to water? As Southern Pines obviously has a resource that actually you were probably, were you on the town council in 2002 when we had a pretty serious drought? Thank you for what you did then that protected the citizens of Southern Pines. Are you aware of the fact that Drowning Creek has decreased as far as its output in the last 40 years? On a specific downhill trend? Okay. So what is your personal, in a sentence or two, what's your personal feeling about whether or not Southern Pines should collaborate as far as providing county water? If you have an opinion or if you're willing to share it?
I think it's always good to talk with the county and any other municipalities that are involved in an issue, whether it's water or sewer or whatever.
The sewer lets out into Drowning Creek, correct? And part of the discussion at the county level was moving, moving the intake for Southern Pines below the sewer water release. So not only would it be creating a, a bigger intake, but also creating a recycling of water that would better sustain Southern Pines. Okay. Just making sure that I didn't miss something when LKC presented, because it was over a year ago.
Correct.
So what is your opinion in that regard? You think just it's important to communicate?
Oh, yes. I would, uh, I want to give you an honest answer. It's a...
I'm looking for one.
I, I wish, I hope, I really do hope that we as a county, government and citizens, and the municipalities can really work together to, to have a, just a concerted effort to protect what really matters. Whether it's a creek, you know, a water source or a heritage building or athletic fields or golf courses. I mean, we're, as you all know very well, we're so blessed here. And, and water is the key. I mean, water is a currency. BJ knows out west, it's his life and death. It's, uh, it's big money. It's, uh, it's...
The Colorado River, right?
Yeah.
I understand.
So the water resource will, will determine how this county grows. And, and maybe where it grows. Maybe it'll grow more in the south than not in the north. But the water source we get from Harnett County has said, we're not selling any more water to Moore County.
Do you know how long that arrangement has existed? How many years?
Well, maybe eight or 10. It's a 100-year agreement.
And the Harnett County water that was being purchased by the county went to which communities?
Well, it went to the county.
Right.
Which serves, serves the Eastmore Water District.
Right.
Rural areas.
Right.
But there are also several major subdivisions in those areas that draw on that water.
Right.
It doesn't serve Carthage. It really doesn't serve Pinehurst, because they have wells.
Right.
Seven Lakes, yep. There are, what, 7,000 people that live out there approximately?
Right, right.
And that's a lot of water. But you're connected with, with Moore County now and Aberdeen is. But 3 million gallons is the max that they can get from Harnett County, which really isn't that much.
And that 3 million is about to be stopped, right?
No, no, no. It will not be increased.
Will not be increased. So the 100-year agreement has been for up to 3 million?
Correct.
And that is not to be increased, but is also not to be cut off? That 3 million is not to be cut off, correct?
Correct.
So you're saying, so I, I mean, I agree with you that I think water becomes the currency as that dictates development, location and whether it happens. As far as the county commissioners are concerned, do you see, and this is probably as changeable as the weather, depending on what votes we're counting, do you see a concerted effort historically to protect the farmlands? Or do you see more of a concerted effort to encourage development as far as housing? I understand, I understand one of the objectives was to provide housing at all different levels, which we all understand is a need.
Well, the county has not found it necessary to encourage housing.
I understand.
Home builders have been flocking here and building everywhere.
I know.
More smaller subdivisions, three, four, five homes, rather than larger subdivisions.
Right.
Uh, it, it, there is development throughout the county and they're using county water.
Has there been any legislation, and I apologize that I don't know the answer to this, county-wise, is there any protection of existing farmlands that cannot be subdivided pursuant to, for example, with the zoning here in Southern Pines? I think that Horse Country has to be a 10-acre property. Is there any sort of, that sort of restriction in the county that you know of now?
Only conservation easements that have been granted by the property owner would not be developed. But everything else is rural agriculture.
Right.
And it's subject to, to be changed for residential development.
So that's three votes? Three people who decide that it's time to change it?
That's what you have to convince.
That's right. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate you calling up.
Here's the plan. It's online. It's, it's a good plan. This is 2013.
Mayor.
Just yet, before, I want to make sure I clear up something and then I'll let you comment as well. Before we, we put too much blame on the county commissioners for development, has the county ever developed a subdivision or housing? No, right? Neither has Southern Pines. I just, sometimes the way that we speak sounds like we are controlling development. But it would be property owners or developers who, who appeal to the county asking to do that.
Yes.
I just, sometimes the verbiage matters. And it's very much like, I, I hear a lot of the public tell us, sitting up here, that we need to stop development. And I have never actually developed anything. So I just want to make sure it's clear that we are, we cannot control everyone's property, but we do try to put in zoning to, to manage the property appropriately.
And I think you all have done a good job.
Thank you. I think Reagan wanted to comment on one of the water issues.
No, actually, I did not. I, I wanted, I wanted to ask two very quick questions relative to your CLRP presentation. One process, one potential outcomes. You talked about these groups of six plus or minus people, five groups. Were those self-selected or were you kind of appointed by Mr. Best and Mr. Hyder to an individual group? Thank you. And secondly, and this may not be fair, but at least amongst your group of six individuals, without knowing what the other four groups might be coming back with, are there one or two things? We've, we've all read and heard commentary about the 2013 plan. It's great, it's not great, maybe it shouldn't change at all. Is there one or two things you can kind of look into the crystal ball and say you believe will change moving forward? Or at least will come out as a recommendation to change, subject to the commissioners agreeing with it or not?
Yeah. Change is up to three people.
Yeah.
Three commissioners or... I'm really not aware of any big idea. One that has been floated, which I think the home builders are not, wouldn't it be? You're a home builder. Another good one. And I, requiring major subdivisions to have not just water, but sewer. Right now, they depend on septic. And that would be a major change. I'm not, not sure that'll come out of the, it's been recommended, but I'm not sure it'll be in the final report.
That may be one that actually, since you've begun your process, the legislature has taken off of the table. Because we even deal with that in some neighborhoods in Southern Pines now, where a home builder can come in and say, here's what it would cost to extend the sewer. Here's what a septic would cost me. And we have to allow them to put the septic in, thanks to some action out of Raleigh. So I don't disagree with the philosophy. It may not even be an option, at least at this point in time. And correct me if my recollection of that is wrong, either you or James, because I know James has dealt with it also, but...
Is that pursuant to Senate Bill 382 or is that pursuant to...
This was a previous Senate bill.
Before, okay.
Do I have that essentially correct, James?
More or less. I, I don't know offhand if it has any fingers that tie to new subdivision, but definitely for existing lots.
Thank you.
And there are situations where it's two cars lead on a sewer line. And if it's one home on a...
Or if it's one home and you're going to run it for a long way, yeah, it makes no sense for anybody, including the entity that's going to have to maintain it long-term.
Right, right. Any other questions? I really appreciate your good questions.
For coming.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think appropriately, right after that, we have... Oh, no, just kidding. This is also maybe appropriate. I was thinking we had Dee first. All right, so alcohol sales at farmer's market. Maybe it's still appropriate. Since I've already said the segue, yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Jessica.
So we have received a request from James Creek Cider House. And they are one of our Moore County agricultural businesses. They're located in Cameron. And as I promised, I'm going to segue this. One thing that those of us who participated in MCLI, and I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with, is we are pretty fortunate to have a lot of agricultural businesses here in Moore County. And I think a lot of people don't realize that, especially if they're located down here in the southern part of the county. But when we went on our tours of some of these businesses, it was pretty consistent that these business owners were communicating that it is hard to be a farmer or an agricultural business here in Moore County, where there's a lot of development pressure and land values are typically valued higher than they can obtain land for. So I share that, because we have had an inquiry from one of our businesses who would like to participate in our farmer's market. If you're not familiar with James Creek, they grow peaches and apples. And then they process those into cider, hard cider. And I believe they also have non-alcoholic cider. They do have a facility up in Cameron where you can go and drink. And they have events there. And, but they are also trying to expand their outreach and come to farmer's markets and other events to increase their sales. So we looked at our codes. And as our codes are currently written today, they would not be able to come to our farmer's market and sell alcohol. And I do want to be clear that their request is to sell closed bottles and that those bottles would remain closed during the farmer's market. So we are not trying to entertain some activity where people would be drinking alcohol at the farmer's market. So it would be very similar from somebody going to the ABC store and buying a bottle of alcohol. So we have talked among staff, we've, with Reagan and Chief Cameron, Chief Palladore, myself, our Parks and Land Director, Greg Thompson. And none of us have any concerns with the idea of selling closed bottles of alcohol, pending some adjustments to the code. So in the memo that I put together, I kind of outlined what some of the conflicts currently are today. And those are largely surrounded around the fact that we address alcohol sales in the section of our code that relates to outdoor special events, or what we commonly call OSCs. And these, I think of First Friday, that is what we would permit as an OSC. And, you know, I'm sure you're all familiar with that. You know that alcohol sales and drinking takes place there. And so that's why those types of regulations are included in that section. But this is different, since they're not wanting to have drinking. So what we recommend doing is just some minor adjustments to the code and essentially having a small subsection that's specific to the farmer's market that we partner with. And including that ability for their approved vendors to sell closed bottles of alcohol if they would like. It would still leave the decision-making in their hands. If they don't want to have alcohol sales, they don't have to approve vendors that do that. But we would not be standing in the way of prohibiting that activity. And I did put a few just kind of overall requirements that I think would help make this palatable. Sorry, don't have my mouse.
Help us understand the malt beverages, unfortified wine, fortified wine distinctions?
So malt beverages are typically going to be like your beers and then...
Yeah, I, one thing you said earlier, you said, you referenced an ABC store. But in fact, this is more along the lines of walking into Lowe's or Harris Teeter, because it's sort of like a beer and wine. So the terminology is very much tied to the state licenses that are associated with the sales of these products. And you'll note in Jessica's memo a little later, I think even Chief Palladore suggested that we not include distilled spirits with this, which would be more of your ABC store type of thing. So this is more just your lower, lower alcohol types of beer, wine, hard cider types of products.
We probably couldn't include distilled spirits, could we?
It has to regulate that.
The C regulates that. I'm not, I'm not going to pretend to know all of the details of the carryout permit for that particular product. But that is not what is being requested or suggested at this time.
Prut and Pete, I think, had a question.
Yeah, I'm hearing Chief Cameron, who actually gets to review some of these permits, also say there is a permit for that, but that is not what we're looking at here.
Right. Those are specifically from James Creek Cider House. And they don't sell distilled spirits. You sell the hard cider.
So, let's just say, like B-Hawk wanted to set up, it would be a process to get a, a different type of permit.
That is correct.
But what is the concern, the opinion, that of distilled, if it's not consumed on premise?
I, I will not speak for Chief Palladore in that matter. I don't know if you two had a direct conversation about that, but I remembered reading it in the memo, and when the ABC store came up, I just wanted to provide the clarification, so.
I'm fine, since they're not requesting it, but I just, you know, it says, is opinion, actually, it didn't say opinion, it says, does not recommend it. I just was wondering why, if it, if it's not consumed.
We can definitely get that answered for you if you were to decide to move forward with the code change.
There's a question. It's my biggest concern with this. We're getting one request from a single company for a single location, but I never feel like we make decisions that way. Because if I make this decision, it's going to be for everybody who sells alcohol anywhere in Southern Pines. So, my question is, what Pandora's box does this open? Because if I do this for them, there's probably other people out there like, oh, I need to do it here, and here, and here, and you allowed it there, so you need to, I just, I get worried about that.
You are absolutely correct, up to the point of this isn't for anywhere in Southern Pines. And I think Jessica talks about it. This is simply the code that we have relative to public property, because the farmers markets take place on our public property. So, you're correct that it would open up to any other vendor that carried a similar permit from the state, who then also was able to obtain space from the nonprofit that is operating the farmers market. So, it, it is more inclusive than just a James Creek request, but it's not quite as wide open as a lot of the other things that you do with the code.
What other operation?
An example, you know, you'll see a lot of the pop-up markets, that's a, you know, very trendy activity that's taking place. You see them at Red's Corner, Rec Room, some of the breweries. This regulation would not touch that, because those are private property. They would still have to go through the ABC and get their own permits to be able to sell alcohol at those events. But this code amendment is not weighing in on those. These are just public properties, and very specifically are parks where the farmers market is.
So, other than the parks, farmers market, which at the, the one you're talking about, it's one of the Armory, and then they already can do it, the downtown park for the things that happen.
Not for the farmers market, no.
After this.
So, the two conditions are public property and farmers market?
Yeah, we were essentially thinking, let's just start it out, you know, just kind of peel that back a little bit and start out very easy. So, just the farmers market that we have an operating permit with.
On public property.
And, and I suggested that we be not quite so specific that we say at Armory Park or Downtown Park, because I know you've been involved in the farmers market, might expand. So, wherever we have an operating agreement with, and I even termed it like as a nonprofit organization that holds a farmers market, they could approve their own vendors.
I guess, so what, help me understand the, the level that stops somebody from going to Sanders Park, or downtown, or Pool Park, or any of our other public spaces, they still would have to do it through an organization before they can just sell alcohol out of our public places?
Well, depending on their event, if they're holding what we deem an outdoor special event, we have a process for that today. And we already have regulations for that today. We don't permit the farmers market as an outdoor special event. We have just a user agreement with them, because it really doesn't rise to the level of where we need police and fire activity and all these barricades. And that's what we use our OSE process for, is to make sure that we're regulating and keeping those events safe. So, if somebody wanted to go to Sandhurst Park and have an event where they had alcohol, they could request that through an OSE.
They would have to get.
Go through the OSE process.
Protection there.
Although, actually, I take that back, because the OSE requires that alcohol can only be in the central business district or downtown park. So, it couldn't be in Sandhurst for that reason.
Okay.
I've got a question. I mean, I love the idea of providing broader opportunities for our local regional businesses, especially as it pertains to farmers. Can we limit it to like North Carolina-produced? I don't like the word, saying the word alcohol over and over, because every time we say alcohol, in my mind, I see like a ball of vodka. And like, obviously, that's not what we're looking at here. We're looking at ciders, or whether there's.
Where that limitation takes place is less so with the local code, and more so with the farmers market vendor and their rules, and who they open up space to.
We're not allowed to limit that.
I think we could. I don't know. I would.
That's the more difficult problem.
And I would prefer not to be in the process of approving or reviewing their applicants. We don't do that today. I mean, we could, you know, certainly go on record in telling them that we encourage this.
That would literally require the creation of some form of new permit or some kind of intake, because we, we don't review the vendors that the farmer market allows in. And if, if we were to try to write that into our code, suddenly, that's, that's something we would have to be reviewing, just.
Like if, if INFEV wants to buy a booth at the farmers market and sell Budweiser, that would be allowed.
If the farmers market allowed them to. I doubt that they would, just based on the type of vendors that they have. I think they work hard to kind of protect that local reputation.
I appreciate what you've done, and definitely want to provide opportunity for all of the local businesses to succeed by far. That's fantastic. Did Chief Palladore, did he give approval, not approval, neutral to this?
He's familiar with us.
And he's okay with it, as, I know you said he had made some comments to things, so, okay.
Yeah, no, he's, he's reviewed this memo, and he is good with all of these recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
What about Autumn Fest and Spring Fest?
Chief Cameron, do you want to come up and talk a little bit more? Chief Cameron is the one who reviews and issues the OSEs, so he's far more familiar with that.
Which is separate from this.
Don't we close the farmers market during Autumn Fest and Spring Fest? We don't have one downtown.
That's correct, we do. So, try to make this simple. All we're talking about is public property and private property. Those are the distinctions. So, the OSE covers anything that is going to be on, is going to close a street, close a sidewalk, have a, draw a larger crowd. There is a pretty stiff process the state controls part of, that is written into our OSE process, and that we control part of, at the direction of the council. Anything to do with alcohol that is going to be served, sold, any of that process in OSE, they have to have an alcohol permit. There's approximately 32 different permits in the state of North Carolina. It is complicated. The average person's struggle is getting a permit, because you got to know what you want to do. There's 32 permits, cover everything from home, could be home brewing and selling, to a brewery selling, to street events. So, they have to go through that process, and we hold their feet to the final process. They don't get approval to do any of that stuff, to sell alcohol unless they've gone through that process. So, that process is in place. This is just a little bit different, because right now, it's, it's really just the farmers market, and we're not talking about serving. We're just talking about selling.
I just imagine that if James Creek wanted to sell, if wanted to have a spot on Broad Street for Spring Fest, and they were already at the farmers market, that they would feel like.
OSE.
They still need an OSE in order to do that, even though they're not going to be serving it.
That's right. We get a list of vendors for that. Now, I'm right there with Reagan. We do not want to, I don't think we can be involved in approving and or not approving vendors in most situations. But we do have a list of vendors, and they know what they're going to be selling. And to this point, alcohol has not been included. Could it be included? It could be, but it would be part of that OSE process, and they would have to have the state permit first, before we'd even consider it.
And that's even a different type of state permit than what they would get for the farmers market, because it's specific to on-premise, off-premise, retail.
Selling versus selling, so it's pretty detailed.
So, Mr. Biden asked one of my major questions. Thank you. But my other question is, in the, in the memo, it talks about the original ordinance, Section 32.092B1, that that ordinance would prohibit James Creek, if we were to approve this, from selling at the Thursday Market at Armory Park. And it's a recommendation, I'm hearing a recommendation, and I'm not, my brain's not really wrapped around how this clearly connects with both the Saturday and the Thursday farmers market.
If you go two bullet points down from where 32.092 appears, it says off-premise of sales at any public facility, which the farmers market has hosted.
So, so.
So, it's to take it out of the downtown only to include, in this instance, the Armory where the farmers market.
In an ordinance, we would say specifically farmers market if we were to pass this, with no spirits, because as you've talked about, I've actually been involved in trying to get a permit. That was insane. So, talk to me about whether or not the ordinance can make it a violation to share samples.
I think that would be based on the state permit, yeah.
Can we, can we make that a part of the ordinance, that samples are prohibited?
You probably could. I would caution you, from a legal standpoint, that I don't know that I want to do something that the state has already got covered.
You also don't need to. You have other ordinances that prohibit consumption of samples.
Okay. Okay.
And, and then you could get into, the sample might actually be a closed container that you carry off and, and don't. I mean, you laugh, but that's how these things loopholes occur.
That's the way I'm trying to think. You're right. I got, I got you. No. So, I'm, I'm worried about that. And if it was specific to farmers markets, and who runs the farmers market? I've never known the answer to that question. Who's interested?
The Moore County Farmers Market. They are an actual nonprofit organization, 501(c)(3).
They've got a board, and they run it. And I'll be honest with you, what typically happens, they get a good crowd, y'all probably know that. If somebody's doing something wrong, they're going to try, typically, they're going to try to address it themselves. If they don't, that sample thing is going to end, end up with a police officer standing there and saying, hey, what are y'all doing? And they're going to say, let me see your permit. Well, we don't have a permit to serve, so I think that runs its course.
So, in order, in order to give away alcohol as a sample or otherwise, one would need a permit to be able to do that.
Yeah, that's serving. There's a whole nother, as you know, there's a whole nother section that, how old is the person? Did you check their ID?
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, that's why.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know that we're going to touch that in our process. The state has got that pretty well sealed up tight.
I'm fine with this policy change. That's all I have.
Severn Bill?
Yeah, I appreciate the distinction between public and private. That helped a little bit. This is one where, just if possible, if it does pass, just remember it, just like a, maybe a year from now, like, hey, here's how it went, it's working, not working. Because I don't want to just pass it and forget it, because I just, you know, let's see how it's going. So, thank you.
I was out of the room for a half a minute, forgive me, y'all, but just to be clear, we're only talking about public areas. We're not talking about private areas, am I right?
We are only talking about public areas where we have an operating agreement with a nonprofit farmers market organization. And part of the reason I say that distinction is based on the trend of these pop-up markets. I could see some type of business or individual saying, hey, I'm going to have a pop-up farmers market, you know, somewhere, and oh, guess what? We can serve or sell alcohol now. That's why we made that distinction, that it must be an entity that has this agreement with us. And today, we only have that agreement with one entity, which is Moore County Farmers Market. I didn't want to call them out by name in ordinance for lots of reasons, but, you know, perhaps there's another one down the road, you know, but.
If you'll agree with that. Come. So, do you need a motion today, or just support to?
No, what I'm looking from you all today is just guidance, if you would like us now to take this on and write the proposed amendment that you would then vote on in March.
It sounds like, go ahead and put something together, and we'll look over it March 11th.
That's good. Thank you.
Are there other public, are there, are there other options of public shared partnerships with the 501(c)(3)? I mean, I'm going through my brain, I'm walking through downtown, I'm doing Red Cross, I'm doing, who's going, who else is going to want to sell?
Well, that's what we have that OSE for.
Two questions.
It was? And you caught that, thank you.
Question number one is absolutely, there's plenty of other people, 501(c)(3)'s that do stuff downtown, all the time that we work with routinely. I don't know of any off the top of my head that want to sell alcohol.
Right.
Could that happen?
Absolutely.
Our first parameter for that would be, I would look at that as being, is this a one-time event or an annual event, which is a regularly scheduled event, where it's once a month. OSE, when it's that one-time-a-year thing, OSE is going to address that. We've got that covered. I feel very comfortable in saying that.
I also want.
First Friday is a great example.
Can the Welcome Center now sell cider?
It's farmers markets.
Not based on this. Yeah, and, and that's, based upon the direction this conversation has taken, I do want to clarify something. It is very possible to imagine the scenario where a private pop-up market on a private piece of property with the proper zoning and the proper permits, one of these 32 or 33 from the state of North Carolina, could legally today sell alcohol.
Right.
The question before the council is purely a result of the fact that nonprofit farmer markets operate on public lands that currently have a code that says that farmers market could not have a Moore County vendor of these goods as a vendor at their farmers market. So, don't get too wrapped up on, oh, this isn't possible anywhere, or you may not see it occur somewhere, because there are legal standards under which this can happen today on some other properties. This is very specific to town-owned public lands and farmers markets.
But with a permit. It's got to be with a permit. If it happens someplace else, they have to have gone through the process.
It has to have gone through some other, well, there may not have been, there may not have been a process. If it's private land and all the right zoning is in place and all the right.
Right, right.
License through the state are in place.
Right.
We don't play a role in that.
Right, okay.
Up to the point that it's.
I'm okay with that.
Safe and all that.
Yeah. I will say that my grandchildren have.
You either want to correct me or add to it, because I've prompted something.
Certainly, I don't want to correct you. I merely wish to distinguish between an OSE permit that is for public property versus something we process, for example, at Hatchet Brewing, for special event permits that are on private property. It's a different, different permit. That's all. Just want to make sure.
And that's exactly the type of thing I'm getting at.
Very easy for everyone to, to bring those two together in your mind, because they both.
And they make it as confusing as they possibly can with all the, and I've dealt with that with an issue before. I just wanted, my last comment is that my grandchildren have been to James Creek Cider House and gave it a five-star review, so they'll probably be really excited to be here for the farmers market if it happens there. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the finance update.
Thank you. I'll ask Finance Director Spies and Brooke to come forward. Staff simply wanted to put together kind of a follow-up conversation to the lengthy audit conversation that took place a couple of months ago. Most everything today is simply kind of for your information and additional explanation or education on concepts around fund balance. Also, just some preview of kind of where numbers stand as of December 31st, with one caveat that Tess and Brooke will, will provide, and it's relative to sales tax, so it's not a number you haven't been seeing. But just through December 31st, this is all a conversation that will continue at length and in greater detail as we move through the budget season, and certainly at your retreat in April. But we wanted to follow up on this to maybe knock out a couple of misunderstandings, or at least improve some understanding, so that when we get to that larger conversation come April, we can spend time on the details of the larger conversation, and, and maybe this stuff will be answered. So, with that, Brooke, I think you're driving Tess?
I'm going to try and talk, but.
Okay.
If I get up suddenly, it's because none of, nobody wants to hear the coffee that's about to ensue, so I apologize. But we just thought, you know, there was a lot of discussion about fund balance, so we just thought we'd give some broad strokes of what we live and breathe every day. We, we look at it every day, so it's, what's general terms to us, it sometimes gets confusing to, to those that don't live and breathe it every day. But this slide just basically gives an overview of what fund balance policy is. It's, you know, kind of guidance that we should be keeping a good level of fund balance to protect against reducing services, service levels, or raising taxes and fees just because of temporary revenue shortfalls. Next are just purposes of fund balance. It provides cash flows when revenues, you know, our revenues, our largest revenue is our property taxes, and that's very cyclical, as we all know. We have the, the August push, and then what we call the December push. And those are where we collect the majority of our, our property taxes. It provides rainy day funds for emergency situations. We can use it to save money for future cap- We can use it to save money for future capital expenditures. Provides funds for strategic opportunities. And I'll use Mike's purchase of those fire vehicles without going into debt. It, you know, allowed us to take advantage of that opportunity and without going into debt with the higher interest rates that we were seeing at the time. And we capitalized on the, not refunds, but the.
Replacement?
No, the, they, they gave us a special price.
Oh, the discount as a result of ordering in three years before it gets delivered?
Yes. Paying cash upfront, we gave, we got a discount. Thank you. We have five different categories of fund balance. And this next few slides show you the most constraint to the, what we call unavailable fund balance. The non-spendables are things like assets and inventories that are held. We've already paid for these things, so there's not cash available that we can free up and use. Next is restricted. And there goes a couple of bullet points below that that explain what restricted is. We have committed, which this one, I think, threw us when we were trying to explain it. And basically, we accrue back at the end of the year. This is a big example of one like sales tax. We haven't physically received the monies, but we accrue the revenue back to report it in the proper period. So those funds are not available at the end of the year to spend. And that's what committed means. It's, it's just like, we can't use those funds at that time when we're reporting fund balance at June 30th. But.
It's coming.
It's coming.
Yeah.
Is it restricted or committed?
Committed. And then assigned, those are.
Oh, up here.
Yes. Assigned are things like our debt service. And it can be things that the board assigns. And it can, these ones are, these are ones that can happen after the end of our reporting period, meaning after June 30th. And that leaves us with unassigned. And as you can see from, from this slide, it's basically everything that's left.
To your question, Brendan, while committed aren't restricted by the definition, they are restricted because they've been committed. I know that sounds very circular, but if you go back one, one slide, you'll note that the first description under committed is that they have been constrained by a formal action of the government, constrained meaning restricted. So.
One question I have, your example of sales tax has a committed character exation. But does it cycle out of that? So once it comes in, does that mean then the next year, that committed will then become available?
Yes.
Okay.
There's new committed that kind of takes its place. So it's always kind of there.
Yeah.
I'm going to try and say this so that it simplifies it and doesn't complicate it. But we, we tried, well, just amongst the three of us, and again, they live in it every day. I live in it at least every other day. The, the challenge of a lot of this language is you've got budget cycle, you've got calendar year cycle, and then you've got these cycles that talk about things like the sales tax where it's three months in arrears and you're accruing back. And, and sometimes all of those calendars play out on the same balance sheet or in the same description, and it can get very confusing.
It's when they're all in the same discussion, that's when it's.
Well, I think that the, the audit is where we see the word unassigned fund balance on several pages with different numbers. And.
Oh, yeah. Unassigned, unassigned, unassigned. They all mean something different on the audit statement.
And there are going to be slides on here, you'll see the term available fund balance, which we pretty casually use as over and above the 25%. But it also specifically means something relative to this conversation. And I won't get too far ahead, but again, it's just, it's the terminology and constantly referring to what really are different calendars.
Okay.
This is our fund balance policy. We make, our policy is to maintain available unassigned fund balance, but at least 25% or greater than 25% of our budgeted expenditures. This is a snapshot of our fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2024. And you can see the available fund balance after all of our policies. And the non-spendables, restricted, all the things that we just kind of talked about broadly, we're at $4.2 million. That's June 30th. That doesn't include any budget amendments that we've made between July 1st and February.
So after, after the total, I'm going back to slide six. After you've taken the total and taken out the non-spendable, taken out the restricted, taken out the committed, taken out the assigned, and then taken out, taken out the 25% unassigned, at the end of that, you still have the 4.2, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And that seems to be.
One more time. Sorry, if you can.
On page six.
Yeah, I'm there.
So you take the total of the 20, or whatever, whatever total we're talking about of whatever day, you take out the non-spendable, you take out the restricted, you take out the committed, you take out the assigned, and then you take out the 25% unassigned that we were required to keep. And at the end of all that, you still have the 4.2.
As of June 30th of '24, yes.
Okay.
And that, that's actually kind of key, because we'll get to a different balance sheet where, where those calendar conversations.
It's actually really nice just to use one year to deep dive the conversation, because as soon as you start, like, the next year's budget.
Because then you get into cash flow, you understand why that number's a little bit larger than what we talk about in June.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
To, to repeat, to make you repeat for my edification, does not include amendments from July until when? Current?
January.
Until today?
Last time they were approved, yeah.
Okay.
So on page eight is what it says on mine.
That's okay. But six on yours?
No, no, no. It is, it is eight, but six is where all the categories are listed. So just.
Write this.
Yeah.
Where's the 25% policy? Which one?
The seven million.
Okay.
So do you have a question? You good?
So, so what is the base that that 25% is?
It's three months of good planning.
Budgeted expenditures, okay. So that's, but the policy, the 25% policy is, is just what we keep. It's not a subtraction out of this. I got it. Okay.
Just a cushion for us.
Same reason we should also have three months. Natural disaster. We have three months of operating expenditures to get us through. What's going on in Western North Carolina. Having that is very important.
And also the cash flow component as well. The cash flow component is a significant issue, as well, as Tess mentioned, at certain times of the year, we have higher cash flow. We have higher cash reserves, but then we expend those over the course of the remainder of the year, which we'll get, she'll get to in another slide as well. That's another reason for having those months.
I'm sorry, Brendan. I just got to say really quick, this is so much clearer. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I can, yeah. This is great. Thank you, ladies.
So FB policy minimum means, FB means?
Fund balance.
Fund balance. So that's the 25%. That's just a rough calculation, 25% of some number.
It's 25, yeah. If you look at the budget that we went through last year, that number is, and I don't have my budget book, but it's.
It's 28 million. That's right. It's based on, it's 28 million.
So that's 25% of 28.
Of what our total budget is for the year. Okay. I'm good.
To June, in June of '24, yes.
That's the one where the minimal is like much less, like single digits, but we do 25, correct?
It actually has, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
And that's what you were getting at, was this bullet point number two. The, the local government commission target is, is 8%, which is approximately one month of expenditures, and we hold back that three. GFOA has their best practices. You know, we, each, each unit considers what's best for, for them, and we do. We target that 25% based off of, you know, the, the recommendations that, that the LGC puts out.
And I'll say too, that 8%, sorry, Tess, the 8% is a bare bottom minimum, one month worth of operations. And so we'll get to this, this future slide to where you see what their true recommendation is for our peer group, which is a little bit different than this, just this 8%. But this is something that most people hear, and is what folks have heard who have been in local government, this 8%. But again, that's really bare bottom.
And that, that's the next slide. As you can see.
8% and below will get you on a treasurer's watch list.
Right.
Say that would impact our audit if we went as low as that. That would impact all kinds of things. We would, yeah. There would be no certificates on the wall.
And this is, this is kind of dictating that or displaying that, is that you see that our general fund expenditures are above the 10 million range. So 25% is the minimum, and most people in, or most units in our area or in their group are above 40%. And, I mean, we've been on trainings and calls where some, some people are high, 75, 100%. And some of those might be coastal towns, but, you know, a lot of people are, are not sitting at that 25% either. We would get a letter from the LGC asking why. And if it's a one-time thing, like we purchased some fire trucks or, you know, did some up fitting on like my building or something like that, and it was a one-time occurrence, it, it would be explained. It would be like one of those F fix like we had.
The other thing to keep in mind, when you, when you hear 100%, you think, whoa. However, you know, Tess brought up the perfect example of a coastal community. Some of those towns might only have a full population of a couple thousand people, but they're subject to disasters on a far more regular basis than many do. So their budget size may be so relatively speaking, small that 100% doesn't even, doesn't even represent the amount of dollars we might be talking about at 25%.
Can I ask one more question on page eight?
That's more than one.
Well, it might lean on, lead to another one. The 4 million, 411, less designated appropriate, appropriated subsequent years expenditures assigned, what is an example of that?
You're talking about the 4102? Okay, so that is in our budget document. And that's where, in that, in that fiscal year, we projected that we were going to need $4,102,000 to make our balance budget.
That's your use of fund balance on that other balance sheet to get to zero, to get to a balanced budget? That's what that figure is.
Okay.
You good? Okay.
And this is just a historical show of what our fund balance, available fund balance has been as a percentage of expenditures from 2022, 23, and 24. And this does vary year to year, you know, based off of expenditures. And ARPA funds are, revenue replacement funds are, are in here as well. So that's why you see, yeah, that's why you see that.
I'm going to ask a question again. I'm going to do it Reagan didn't try not to confuse things more. This chart on page 11, this 57, 75, 53%, the way that you are getting those percentages is the total fund balance number. So if I jump back up to page eight, we're talking about the 20 million? No. What number are you using to get that percent? Because when I run the percent of, of fund balance.
As a percent of budget?
I'm getting 39.
As a percentage of actual expenditures.
Okay, of actual. Okay, thank you.
I think we're on slide 12 now.
So the policies are based upon, this again goes back to what calendar you're using and what, one, one is, we do 25% at budget time based upon the appropriated expenditures. This chart is actually using your, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is using your audited figures for what actually got spent versus what you've got on reserve at that point in time.
It's actually great to have these numbers. And if it says that in the words above the colored chart, I dismissed it. Okay. I think you guys can continue. I'm sorry.
Now to make things even probably more confusing, here's where we sit with available fund balance at December 31st, 2024.
Okay.
So we do not have $10.5 million that we can spend on more fire trucks for Mike or anything else. This is just where we sit as of December 31st, realizing that we still have six more months of our fiscal year expenditures that we have to run through.
Yeah. So realize that that bottom line figure is a, it starts at that top, which was the fund balance at 123124, which includes what you heard earlier referred to as the August and the December push. Because we've already collected a vast majority of the property taxes for the year, but we've got six more months of expenditures to include salary and capital projects, et cetera, that has not been spent yet. So if you look at the same chart as of June 30th, that 23 million that you start with at the top is going to be a much smaller number.
Yeah. Okay.
Let me, let me see if I can still stay halfway clear. So based on the fact that the fiscal year ends June 30th, and we're, our budget retreat isn't until April, it's better for us to look at the April figures to get a better idea of where we are fiscally in terms of.
What we'll bring to you at the retreat in April will be some updated figures that, for the most part, I hope will be through March 30th. So they'll cover three quarters of the year.
And all the department heads give us their projections for expenditures for the, the last quarter of the year. And that's what we actually use to project out the available fund balance and, and what we kind of leave.
My hair out. So in your office.
So are you really able, I, I mean, we meet the first week in April. Is it really humanly possible? Or does that mean that you and Brooke stay up every night before the, the all-day retreat, trying to make things available through March 31st? You have projections? You can deal with that? So you're okay? And you're not up until 2:00 AM?
The last minute thing we might get is sales tax that we'll post in April. But, yeah, we.
Be interested in.
And with the way sales tax is going now, really flattening out, it's, I don't think it's going to deviate much from what we're seeing the first part of the year.
Thanks. That's great.
Tate, Mayor, do you have any questions? Are you sure? Okay. And, and these last two slides are just, as, as Reagan said, you guys have seen sales tax, but we just wanted to give you a real clear picture of that, that 27,000 this year versus last year is, is what we're seeing. We were at a conference in Pinehurst last week where everybody's saying that sales tax is getting really, really flat. Which makes our projections even more important, I think, in '25 and '26. So.
I think the last report that you gave, I think we were running about 15% on, 15% more revenue than planned.
Above projection.
Yeah.
Bottom of this chart here, you'll, you'll notice budget versus actual, rather than 23, 24 versus 24, 25. And, and what we'll be talking about if things continue as they have been, what we'll be talking about come April is, right now, the plan is to go ahead and adjust estimates for the next coming fiscal year on that same three-year rolling average that we've been talking about. But understand that the delta keeps shrinking as we do that, if, particularly if this is going to be flat, and at best if it remains flat, because if we go in recession and it drops, and we're working off that three-year running average, it's, it's going to be a challenge.
It's going to be a huge challenge.
So, but that, again.
15% is a pretty decent buffer. And, I mean, and I think it may end up.
Well, it's, it's 15% on sales tax, which represents 20 to 25% of our total revenue stream. So it's, yeah.
So what's the game plan if we do hit a recession and the sales tax just drops significantly?
Well, that's, number one, your, your short-term game plan is you start looking at the fund balance.
Right, okay. And then those numbers would go into the following year on the three-year roll and it would decrease your spending. Okay.
Well, that's when you have to.
Might not get any more trucks if that happens.
Less on that. More revenue through that, yep.
Or the way that we've been calculating are the fact that we moved to a three-year rolling average on sales tax. If we see a recession and that starts to look troublesome as a way to estimate, we adjust, just like we did, yeah. Yeah, it's fine.
The last slide is just property taxes. Again, because what we put in, the available fund balance was just through the end of December. You know, we've collected through the end of January, which, you know, could potentially have been a big month for us. Just wanted to show that we are right on where we were last year at 99.44% versus 99.49.
And again, that's what we've collected against budget. And remember, budget is based upon 99% of the figure that the county gave us. So that's not the collection rate for the county. That is just how much we have collected versus the amount we budgeted.
We have some other follow-up financials that are a little bit more detailed about the general fund, where revenues, expenditures by function, but it also shows the drill down of how we kind of present the budget as well. So we felt like these numbers through December 2024 would be helpful with a comparative of December 2023. And then the water sewer is the very last page. So we can go through these line by line or happy to.
Add the lawn taxes, type of page one, I'm just teasing.
Rather than going through it line by line, I would say if there are, if there's something specific that you would like to point out, otherwise we can take these home and look over them and then come back to you guys individually with questions.
I do want to point out on page, Schedule B, page two, right next to the type of revenues. Brooke prepared this. There's Qs, Ms, As, and then BA. And then there's a key on the last page. We just wanted to point out that some of these are collected quarterly, some are monthly, some are annually. BA means by annual, that's pal bill. Just to, so that if you see these great swings, like some of them have zeros, it's because we collect our leased vehicles. We collect that annually. 2023, you can see that we hadn't collected that at this point in the year, but in 2024, 25, we had.
And I'll say one quick thing too. Just pointing you back to that local option sales tax on page two, for example, it's about midway through the page. There's a little one there as well. And that is just indicating that this schedule only shows three months of the sales tax distribution. That's going to show July, August, and September, and that's because of that three-month lag. So we, through December, we only received those three months. And so that's why the variance there looks so much greater, even though we're halfway through the year. It's because of at the end of the year, we will record the accrual, as we've talked about, for those three months and record it back to fiscal year 25. And there are some others as well that kind of fall in that same rationale, like the video programming tax and the franchise tax right below. That only has one quarter. Even though we're two quarters of the way through the year, we've only received one quarter of that distribution. And so that's why you only see one quarter of revenue in there and another, you know, three quarters left to be collected.
So on the sales tax, because of the three-month lag, these December 31st, 2024 numbers are only July, August, September. Right, okay. So making sure I had the right months before I wrote down. What was the other line item that you said was the same way?
The two right below that, video programming tax, that's a quarterly distribution and it only has the first quarter. So that's just July, August, September as well. And the one right below it, the franchise tax is also just.
Q1?
Yep, Q1. That's right.
All right, Council, do you have any things that you would like, that like, you would like answered on this before we move forward? Or are you okay just taking some time to look over it?
I'm looking forward to looking over it and I admire you both greatly. I agree with Councilman Goodman. I would pull my hair out if this was something I had to put together. So thank you for that. And I'm sorry you're sick. Thank you for being here. Above and beyond. Appreciate it.
So. I was thinking that maybe if there's any specific things that we, any questions that we have for the budget retreat, maybe that we send that to Reagan before, so there's not on the fly that we, you know.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then in addition, I would say if you have questions specifically on this, reach out to Tess. Does that make sense? Okay. And then if Tess, if you're getting the same questions, maybe come back with those answers for the entire group. Just, you know, if it's something that clearly is a concern for more than one person.
Reagan, do you want to proceed on questions to Tess?
Please, yes, because again, whether she gets the question only once, it may be something somebody has or they don't even know they have the question, but they'd appreciate the information. So I, and I thank you both for, for those follow-ups because what I wanted to offer, first, I wanted to thank both Brooke and Tess for putting this together. Secondly, one of the requests of me was that you get more financial data and more regular updates. So if this is too much, let me know that. If it's not quite enough or something's missing, let me know that. But we're, we will provide everything that we can and, and not too much if you find it to be too much, so.
I mean, I'm used to serving on boards where we, we do this sort of thing quarterly anyway, as you sort of have some kind of report that's.
Well, I tell you what that would help is if you have the situation where, you know, we may be anemic on a budget somewhere because of the way we forecasted and we can make those changes. I mean, you, that would happen anyway, but.
I was going to say, believe me, if we're getting anemic, you'd hear from me.
But it, it could be like, hey, putting this on your radar, you know.
Okay.
No, any, any feedback, any questions as you go through all this, as it's a lot. We're more than, more than willing to either provide a quick answer or dive in and get the answer, so.
Okay. Thank you guys so much. Brooke, Tess, it really, we do appreciate the work you all do, your entire office. I don't think I would be losing my hair or pulling it out, but I know it takes a special type of person to do accounting. And we appreciate that those, that you all have the brains you do and your patience with us. Did you have another question? Did I cut you off?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Okay. Now, this is what I thought we were actually moving to right after the county land lease plan is the, the planning department update. And I assume that Director Greve is going to be the one presenting, but I will go ahead and say that I've had several conversations with Senator McGinnis and Representative Jackson. And just today left another message for Representative Moss, talking about some of the local bills.
Did you say another message?
Yeah, but technically I mean the first message. It's another message.
Oh.
But this is the first message on this issue, yes. Not calling anybody else.
Great segue, because that's on my list.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the time this month. I'm going to go over a handful of things that are just general planning update. Do you mind if I stand and walk around?
That sounds great.
You, because of like, sometimes you have a preference on the podium versus sitting. And so I was like.
I'm so happy to have you walking around.
Thank you. You may recall that back in December, we had before you the landscaping text amendments, the tree protection ordinance, as well as the character districts. That was file OA 3 and OA 424. And that was right after Senate Bill 382 got passed. And so we pumped the brakes. We came to a screeching halt, actually. We did more than pump the brakes. Yeah. And, and we said, okay, cool. Let's wait and see what happens. The council, at the request of the town attorney, postponed, continued the public hearing to March. And we are coming right up on the March deadline for our packets next week. We have obviously looked at, at that time, there was discussion about updates. The update on Senate Bill 382 is that there is pending legislation right now to redefine downzoning, to exclude non-conformities statewide. There are also a number of bills, as you know, because you mentioned it just moments ago, that there are two House bills to restore downzoning, one of which is for Stanley and Catawba Counties, another for restoring downzoning in Granville and Vance Counties. There is a Senate bill that restores downzoning in multiple counties. Birdie, Camden, Currituck, Dare, Gates, Hurtford, Hurtford? Is that right? Yeah, not Hartford. Northampton, Pascatank, Perkam, I'm just slaughtering these how I say it. Yeah, Perkamens and Terrell County, Terrell Counties, pardon? And then there is a, another one to restore downzoning in Buncombe County. So it is in the works. Now, as we said at the time, we believe that the tree protection ordinance may be able to stand on its own because it's a process, not so much a design requirement. So the tree protection ordinance could possibly move forward, whereas the landscaping and certainly character districts are a little bit trickier. For right now, they will simply be back on your agenda, week after next, as a continuation of the public hearing. And at that time, we can discuss and you decide what to do to continue it again or to take some other action. So I just wanted to let you know those are coming back. I wanted to give you an update along those lines. We got a lot of good information because I attended the North Carolina Association of Zoning Officials Midwinter Workshop. We got updates on previous Senate bills, 607, 166, and 382, all of which have a lot of effects on planning and zoning issues. And we will be preparing a package of text amendments based on that, as you are aware. We also heard a lot of, about a number of case law updates, including three Supreme Court cases, two court of appeal, two court of appeals cases, and one circuit court ruling that we will be working on to update our zoning and make sure we continue to operate in our administrative functions in consistency with those Supreme Court rulings. Because that's, that's the kind of bread and butter of what we want to stay up to date on. I also want to give you an update on our URC grant. That is our underrepresented communities grant, because that is a National Park Service grant to provide money to focus on historic district and historic resources within historically underrepresented communities. And if you pay attention to national news, you may be of the opinion that that, you may have the impression that that grant may be affected. We checked in with the National Park Service. That grant was a 70,000, $75,000, excuse me, $70,000 grant. Part one is 95% done, which is the three nominations for the Amos Broadway Theater Building, Trinity AME Church, and Our Lady of Victory Catholic Church and School. Those are just about done. We have about $4,000 worth of work left on those. National Park Service told us as of today that we should continue to draw down on that grant. And we will find out when they do, the first time someone attempts to draw down on that grant and that drawdown is denied. But the staff at National Park Service said to continue to do that. Part two is next. That's going to take the balance, $36,250. And that's going to be to come up with a new list of, a new inventory of historic resources within, within the West Southern Pines community. That inventory would be possibilities for future nominations. So you're basically, that grant was to take three properties that had already been identified, nominate them for, for historic structures, and then take an inventory of other things that may be nominated at the, at some point in the future. So I just wanted to give you an update on that because it's kind of a hot topic, if you will, on, on that type of grant. Finally, we had, as you recall, you appointed three new members recently to the planning board. We had our first meeting. Our new planning board chair is Matthew Walden. That's great. He's been on the board for quite a while. So it's going to be great to have him as the chair. We're very excited about that. And then just yesterday, we had a new, we had an orientation meeting with our three new members, Andy Speck, Jason Scribner, Michael Skolnick. We spent two hours talking, getting to know each other, is also giving them full updates on everything they need to know about what is the difference between legislative advisory functions as well as preliminary forums. They are also going to be taking, there are five members of the planning board out of seven, who are going to be taking the UNC School of Government's Planning and Zoning 101 two-day online course. It's two afternoons in a row. So they're going to be doing that and they're very excited about it because we have a lot, we have a very new planning board. We have a, that has a lot of opportunity for, for learning. They're really excited and they all have really, really different backgrounds. So they're, we're going to have a lot of good conversations at the planning board. So with that, I want to move on to, oh, boy, the fun one. The first thing I would like to do is, when it comes to a discussion about our costs for reviewing, this is the memo that was in the packet. This is my last topic. The first thing I wanted to do is mention right off the bat what I'm not here to do. What I'm not going to do is pitch a new fee schedule. I'm not going to pitch a new fee schedule because there's a big, important discussion that has to happen and decisions have to be made by town council before a new fee schedule for planning and zoning and development fees can even be developed. That question that has to be answered first is the, the issue of what is the actual cost recovery when it comes to planning fees? Because you can make a decision, a policy decision, a public policy decision, to have taxpayer, tax dollars cover all of development fees to no, none of development fees. And so that sliding scale somewhere in between there is a choice of, of public policy. So what I'm, what I am here to present is, according to the comp plan, as you note, adopted at the end of 2023, that slide didn't make it in, okay. There is a policy 11.2 that talks about regularly looking at cost recovery from development fees because it's a benefit-based type of finance. I actually had some, some great contributions from Jessica about how you look at administrative fees that are charged for services and how you distinguish those from taxes. Administrative fees, benefit-based finance is used for people who are directly benefiting from a service. And there's pros and cons of that, as opposed to taxes are collected from everybody and generally serve everyone. But the reason I wanted to introduce that first is because a lot of people, particularly when it comes to development fees, they say, well, it's just more taxes. It's just more taxes. It's, development fees are like the, sometimes I think they are the most controversial of all the different administrative fees because they're just one more fee. They do affect the cost of housing. Another thing I guess I want to say before we get too much into this is I am aware that we are having meetings about the cost of housing with a group of people. And they all, at our first meeting, they all said, well, part of those fees are the cost of land. Part of those fees are the cost of material and the cost of labor. Part of those fees are, part of those costs of housing are the fees that governments charge for bringing housing online. And so because we just had that conversation and because I've been working on an analysis of actual costs versus administrative fees for quite some time, I wanted to be very transparent. So I actually called the three members of the committee who are builders and told them that I was having this conversation today to make sure it didn't go out through the grapevine, that I was talking out of both sides of my mouth, like trying to get affordable, more workforce housing over here while at the same time talking about fees over here. So just to be very transparent about that. But the purpose of this, the information I have to give you is to say, very simply, here's our current fees. They were adopted last in 2019. It's been six years since 2019. We have five years of inflation data, the Consumer Price Index, i.e. inflation. And because we have those five years of data, the comp plan calls for having a discussion about what percent of actual cost do we recover through the charging of administrative fees? And the data that I have not had available in the past, in the distant past, is, okay. So what does it actually cost to process a special use permit? What does it actually cost to process a conditional zoning district? What is that actual cost? If you said to me before we did this research, hey, your current fee is 500 bucks, what does it actually cost? I would say, I don't know, because that's an awful lot of time and a lot of different people, that a lot of people touch these different processes. So we did that analysis and we took a lot of time to do it to make sure it was really good. I, I sort of previewed this at a, at a prior meeting. Here's what we started with. First thing we did was we took the different positions in our office and we started with the hourly wage. We added retirement at 13.64. We added FICA and Medicare at 7.65%. 401K at 5%, workers' comp at 1.55%. Then we added health and life insurance, which is $4.01 hourly, as well as the discretionary supplemental income, which is 1.25 dollars hourly. And we came up with a total cost. Now, I blacked this out because I had this slide ready and it had all the positions and all the details on there. And while it is public information, for the purpose of anybody watching at home, it is absolutely public information. I just thought it was kind of rude to just like splash it up here. And so if anybody thinks I'm hiding something, I'm not hiding anything. I just thought it was a mission, an issue of politeness for all the different positions in our. But I will say that the average, if you take all these, and again, it is public record. If somebody really wants to know it, all they have to do is submit a public information request. The end result is that the total hourly cost, if you take the average of all these positions and come across, total it up, the average for a planner in our shop is $45.70. You might say if it was private sector, that's what we would bill at because it would cover hourly wages plus overhead, if you will. So this is, the average is not what I used for what you're about to see. I actually used the individual positions. You're going to see how I broke this down. Now, this breakdown comes from the way, when I spent some time in the private sector, this is the way we would scope projects. So if somebody said, had a big project, we would break down the tasks in one column. We would, we would break down what members of the team were going to be participating, for how much time for each of those tasks. Certain tasks would have multiple members of the team touching it. Certain tasks would only be one member of the team touching it. You then would take this number, half an hour or four hours, you would multiply it by the value that was in for that individual position in that previous one. And I would, and you, you go between, between the different sheets in the spreadsheet. You come over here, you add in just dollar cost for materials such as site visits, things like that. You then go over to the total staff time. So if you have a place where three staff touch something, we'll say here, for reviewing the planning board report, creating the planning board meeting packet, you have a total of 1.5 hours touched by three different people. Then you take, and the amounts are actually totaled up from these columns, where you have that position takes that much time, that position takes that much time and therefore money. And then you bring it all over here, you total it up, and you come up with that. Couple caveats here. So wait, every single major subdivision, preliminary plat you do, cost that? Nope, because it varies all over the place. For every one that was less than this, I can tell you about one that was more than this. For every one that was a lot less than this, I can tell you one, about one that was an awful lot more than this. So in coming up with these, I used my experience and my up here end value of about how many hours does this task take? And I use a very, I will say, I used a conservative average. I did not think to myself, you know, I want to try to recapture it. Nope. I thought, what is a conservative number that does not include when the community around this particular project really gets excited and we start chewing up the equivalent of days worth of time in taking. of days' worth of time in taking phone calls and, you know, being asked to come out and visit the site because the neighbors are upset and they want us to listen to what it sounds like or look through their trees and things like that, what the adjacent property looks like through the trees and things like that. So I just kind of thought, what's a, what's a reasonable number? Now, you're good. So, major subdivision preliminary plat, I have a spreadsheet that does this for every single development application type that we review. I did not, I'm not going to bring it up and go through it, but it's, it's definitely available. And so this one example, I just wanted to give one example to show how it was done, and the question then comes down to, when you come up with these end numbers, you want me to stay on this for a minute? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So when you take these, yeah, and you come down to this, this number, and we could go through this real quick if you want, just as, as one example. Okay, okay.
I can ask a question.
Yeah, please.
So when you come in, that'll, that'll give him time to do whatever he's trying to do. So if you have $47 an hour as your rate?
Just, we'll say that's the planning department average, yeah.
And you say overhead, but you don't actually mean overhead, having run a business before.
Correct, I don't mean the lights, I don't mean the heat, I don't mean the mortgage on the building, you got it.
You're not talking about the lights, the building, the copy machine, the phone system.
This is just, you might say just wages plus benefits.
It's wages and benefits, yeah.
Thank you, not overhead.
So this is actually a fairly modest assessment of what it's costing.
You could definitely argue that the, all the other things that we enjoy the privilege of, the computers we're sitting there using, the desks we're sitting there, sitting at, the kitchen we use for our break room, yes, absolutely, none of that is included here, this is just wages plus benefits. Thank you for pointing that out.
It costs the town far more than $47 an hour.
Yes.
So the people power is $47 an hour?
Yes.
Yeah, got it.
Thank you.
Okay, cool.
Wages plus benefits, okay.
Two hours to transcribe all the way across for prepare PowerPoint presentation for planning.
Yes, you're right. That's correct. For some reason, that one's not, it would have been captured here because it would go down and, and, yep.
That's right, you don't, you don't do the math on the, it'll be four hours, I guess.
Yep. And I actually didn't do anything with this, with this total value, other than have it here. This doesn't go on to have any use later. There is no question whatsoever that every single cell in this column, you could break down and say, does it really take you an hour to do that, plus a planner one an hour to do that? So for example, with a major subdivision preliminary plat, I tried to use whatever is the least expensive staff that is capable of doing that project based on their job description. And then, management oversight and supervision of that, because a planner one processing a major subdivision preliminary plat is not going to do that completely in a bubble. They're going to be checking in with planning director on a regular basis, and so I assigned a modest amount of money for overseeing those individual tasks while still relying on that position to do that work, because over time, this position may be six months in or six years in, and so there's going to be some, some deviation there. One more thought about these, it always comes up, every time in my career I've talked about administrative fees for planning, it always comes up, why don't you just charge like a lawyer's office charges, where you, you know, take down your time and at the end, you don't want to do that. You don't want to do that for a number of reasons. Totally unpredictable. The developers don't care for fees that way because they want to work, whatever our fees are, they want to work it into their spreadsheet ahead of time, and no, they don't want to get a bill after a project gets denied that was highly controversial for thousands of dollars of planning time that's totally attributable to this project, but it winds up just being, they can't even predict it because it wound up being so controversial. And similarly, fees that anticipate a ton of controversy but don't have it, you want to be vigilant against that, too. So a fixed fee is always the best way to go. That's completely aside from the fact that training staff, to keep track of their hours, that's not super efficient, but you do get used to that over time, as Bill from being a lawyer can, can vouch for, you just kind of get used to putting your, your time down and what you attribute it to, yeah. Okay, so now.
I also want to say, it's important to note that you're also, you don't work for the developers. You work for the town, for the citizens, and if, if it weren't important work that you were doing, then it would be 100% cost recovery, and the developers would pay all the fees, or we would have less staff, and you would spend fewer hours, and the town wouldn't look as great.
Yep.
So I mean, I think it's.
We're investing.
Yes. This is us planning for our future the way that our citizens are asking us to.
That is an absolutely perfect comment for why the first part of the, of the process is not for me to roll in with a proposed fee schedule, because that is a planning director position, making a judgment call about what percentage, you know, is attributable as a, as a, as a cost back to the developer, and what percentage is a benefit to the general public of this, of the process of reviewing subdivisions, and our office being available to take phone calls from neighbors who have questions and things like that. So now.
So I have a segue question that actually the mayor set it up. I'd like to do an assist on this one, because this is clearly going to fall into our laps to determine the fee, which is great, which is fine, that's where it should fall. I'm interested in when the, how old are the Pinehurst fees and Aberdeen fees and Moore County fees that are referred to on this chart on page 27 of 39 on the memo? So in other words, you have the 2019 fee from Southern Pines, and you have the actual cost from 2025, and then you include a Pinehurst fee and an Aberdeen fee, and I have no idea of the date, are those?
Those are the current fees as of right now.
How long have they existed? Do we know that?
That I don't know.
Okay.
The reason I put those in there is because anytime you're talking about administrative fees, it always comes up, but what do the adjacent municipalities do?
Right, which is great.
What does the county do? Yeah, so I figured I'd go ahead and throw those in there ahead of time.
We're having a simultaneous meeting and saying, okay, our fees were also created in 2015 or whatever, we need to look at those.
But I would also offer, if they went to the extent of breaking out every one of their permits the way that BJ has here.
Yeah.
It's going to look different. It's going to look different based upon the level at which they staff, it's going to look different based upon the codes that they are attempting to inspect, keep up with. I mean, we, we've had conversations before about how our UDO is pretty voluminous, and it's far more representative of a community typically much larger than Southern Pines, so.
Yeah.
I don't want to go picking on anybody or name any names, but some of those departments, it is, BJ's correct, I've been having this conversation for 30 years of my career, and it's always, what does the next door community charge?
But how do they do it?
But sometimes what they're, the code that they're overseeing, or the amount of inspection or review that they're doing of that code, it's not apples to apples, so it makes it for a tough comparison.
No, and it's, it's actually nice to have the guideline and to have the information, but Mike, I mean, if these are 10 years out of date, I'd be interested to know.
They're not 10 years out of date, they're their current fees, yeah. I'll tell you, for example, the fact that from their, from their fee schedule, the fact that Pinehurst fee for a conditional zoning district is $5,000, and for a special use permit is 700.
Like, I know.
I know from doing this exercise and from years of doing this that those two processes are different, but there's a bunch of state statutory minimum things that have to be done, and some other things that sprinkled in there, in my mind, I have a hard time just from a distance, and if Alex was standing right here, I'd pat him on the shoulder and say, sorry, ma'am, but I, I, I just, I like, the difference, that difference in price, to me goes, wow, I, I don't know where those two numbers come from, but that's okay, it's their jurisdiction, it's not my business to know where those numbers come from. But what I do know is that things that go to planning board, and then go on to town council, and require us to write a staff report, and require us to visit the site, and take phone calls from neighbors, and take phone calls from developers.
Right.
And babysit inadequate applications, that we can't get stuff out of them.
Right.
And, and have meetings about stuff, and spitball solutions to problems that have been brought to us by neighbors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They all tend to pile up to a pretty similar pile of, of hours and, and time. And this is sort of reflected here. Now, why is it in this order? It's in this order simply because I went ahead and organized this by the actual cost that was the highest at the bottom to the lowest at the top, the actual cost. Now, I made this a handout because I felt like it hit the sweet spot of what I observed to be the, to the town council's interest in details versus visual representation, something you could take home and dig into, and so that's why this is, this particular slide is a handout, no, no, nothing more special than that. But over here, what we have is the current fee. I did present a column here where I took the cumulative CPI over the, since they've been updated in 2019 to 2024. It is 23% if you total up the percentage, if you first, I actually used the index number for the calculation. Again, Jessica gave me an assist on that, I appreciate that. I didn't just take the percentage and add up the percentages and do it the hokey way, I went with the actual index value, did the right calculation, and so the total cumulative between 2019 to 2024, 23% CPI, this is what the current fee would be if we just adjusted for inflation since it was last modified. This is the actual cost, broken down in that spreadsheet with like, all right, here's what we actually do to knock these out. And then, this is the percentage of cost recovery. I organized this because I tried a bunch of different ways, and this was the only one that really kind of visually made sense of what, what you're doing. You have your highest cost, your gray bar is your cost, your blue bar is the current fee, and you could kind of pick out the deltas here between, some of them aren't that far off, and if you were to compare current cost recovery to the CPI column, there's some that are actually spot on. So, so we're not really off a whole lot here. I mean, this isn't something where, you know, it's completely crazy. There's a handful that are, that are off by a fair bit, and I think that can be attributable to in the past, maybe a council had a discussion about certain type of applications where it was determined we're going to subsidize that more. So for example, hey, we really think that the work in the historic district is an important benefit to the entire community, so, and we want, we don't want to discourage anybody from getting a certificate of appropriateness major works, so let's only recover 25% of the cost of a certificate of appropriateness major works, whereas other types of applications may have less at that time perceived and determined by the town council to be public benefit. But this discussion, the comp plan certainly calls for this, a discussion of what is an appropriate amount of cost recovery, and I don't actually have a whole lot more to say or pitch other than this, and then after that, just answer questions, I can make that whole spreadsheet available to you, I got to imagine you want to see it, right? Yeah, just dig into it, go nuts. I will send you a locked version of it. But, so, yeah, and, and so at this point, it's really just, as Reagan indicated earlier, a few months from now, you know, we're, we're heading into budget season, sometimes administrative fees are adopted with a new budget, sometimes they're not. I don't have a preference on this in terms of what percent of these things we recover. I have professional opinions about what we spend on it, et cetera, et cetera, but this is a public policy choice, and, and I'm here to facilitate a, a conversation about that.
Previous age, what was that, 41 and a half hours for which one of these?
Which, for a major subdivision preliminary plat? Yep. Now, major subdivision preliminary plat, you see on the, on the memo that you got, major subdivision preliminary plat is, the current fee is $1,500 plus $25 per lot, so in order to, I did it, I assumed a 10-lot subdivision on that in order to compare fees, because the actual cost, I'm going to tell you, maybe, you know, certain planners would be like, I can't believe you're saying that out loud, the cost between a 10-lot subdivision and an 80-lot subdivision, yeah, you're going to spend more time on an 80-lot, but you've still got an awful lot of things that you're doing for a 6-lot subdivision and 100-lot subdivision. There's an awful lot of time spent that strangely enough.
Fixed cost and variables.
I mean, there really are. You're, you're, there are so many things, and by the time I got done with it, I looked at it and I said, would we spend a whole bunch more time on this if it was 50 lots versus five? And I was like, not really. So you know what? That calculation, I don't think that's necessary to go, when you think of all the things that are being averaged in that, in that, in that, in that conservative average of an annual ca, of an actual cost, I don't think that makes a big enough difference to factor.
Is that maybe the reason why some of these fees have a per lot additional charge?
Some don't, yeah. Yep. I think, I think other administrators have found a similar result, which is some, some just say, oh, there's absolutely, and I can tell you, if you run the numbers and you do a base fee plus, and it's a big subdivision, 60 lot, 70 lot, I think you're coming, I think the town is coming out ahead on that fee, because it, it goes, it goes up pretty quick. If you do like a 50-lot subdivision at $25 a lot, that fee gets pretty monstrous.
Just along the lines of something BJ said about maybe past councils and things, having been through a number of conversations, never broken out into this detail, but when we have discussed things like these permit fees, it has been around subjects of what are others charging, what does it generally cost without this level of analysis? But also, to some extent, if there are things you wish to promote versus not, you might subsidize more of that fee. And along the lines of what BJ is talking about now, you know, when you start doing it by lot, one of the things I'm sure any number of you have heard, we certainly heard it during the initial conversations around affordable housing around the table a week or two ago, there has at least been historically an interest in, and the historical development of Southern Pines have been smaller, local, or semi-regional home builders and developers.
Right.
So for somebody to come in that has the capability of doing a 250-home subdivision or 1,000-home subdivision, there is some thought behind not charging an amount to that individual that's the exact same as somebody that comes in and does the 10-lot subdivision. So it's, it's one of those, you can utilize your fee schedule to also provide incentive or disincentive for certain types of applications or.
Right.
So along those lines, like a, a conditional zoning, a CZ versus SU permit are kind of for the same type, you know, applicants, we provided the opportunity for them to choose between those two processes, right? But we prefer CZ because it gives us more control on design, so using, what you're saying is the fees.
Not sure if that's the perfect example, but yes, I think you're getting it.
So we, we tried to get rid of the special use permits by moving towards conditional zoning.
Get rid of because of state law, et cetera, yes.
Can't really choose between a special use permit or a conditional zoning district.
Yeah, that's why I said I didn't know if that's a perfect example.
So if I come in and say, hey, I want to do this on this property, we look at the zoning table and certain things, it's a special use permit. Those are, the things that were left in that column are the things that we know this particular use probably needs the protection of the quasi judicial process. A cell tower is a good example of that. If it meets the criteria and they can mitigate impacts, you don't really want it to be a conditional zoning district, because now legislatively, they're going to can every single, you know, the neighbors are going to shut down every cell tower.
But we did have a conditional zoning district for a cell tower.
That was a unique situation.
Because it already existed, and you were, you were amending something that already existed.
Yeah, yeah, no, that one was, remember the first two that came through the gate? I was like cringing, I was like, ah, these were not meant to be. Tony Farley's conditional zoning district was the, was a great example of conditional zoning district where you got more housing with better design.
Okay.
So in your opinion, instead of a blanket, okay, we'll have the, we'll have the discussion, what do we feel like the subsidy should be? We're going to have a blanket percentage of cost recovery, we probably should go through all 25 of these and make them different?
Oh, no, I don't, I think that really what's appropriate is, if, if you want to say to me, you know, here's what we think, and I'll come back with a version that we can then change after that, change of that. If you want to say right now, hey, we want it, we all want to, we all want to take some time with this, we want to see a copy of the spreadsheet, we want to understand what all went into it, we want to go through all the rows and see what kind of stuff, because remember, there's, there's adjustments from your point of view that can be made everywhere. But ultimately, no, I don't think that it would be appropriate to ask council to do that level of minutia, but I definitely want to hear the discussion and then you to tell me the minutia you want me to do to bring you a fee schedule that is comfortable for you based on that public policy decision about how much cost recovery is appropriate. Does that make sense?
Bill, for your purposes, I would suggest that, yes, go through each one of those, and maybe mentally, I'm just going to use a hypothetical, it's not a recommendation by any stretch, but if, if you just went into it with the, oh, I'm going to split the baby, it's going to be 50%, but then you see certain types of permits on there that you, you really don't want to see a lot of applications for, or more, maybe more appropriately, you don't feel that the public should have as much skin in the game in the review of that type of permit, that might be one you put an asterisk on and set aside, and vice versa, if there's something there that you say, this really meets what the CRP is trying to get at, and this is really the kind of thing I'd like to be reviewing, maybe that one's not 50 and it's 25. But I, I'd say there will be exceptions, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't go through each one of them and sign a num, sign a number necessarily, I don't think that's at all but.
No, you know, like, it's, it's tough because there's a number of ways to handle this. If the council were to say, you know, we think, generally speaking, that, you know, remember, what went into the actual cost analysis is already a conservative estimate. I can think of many situations where public participation chews up days' worth of staff's time. I didn't, those are outliers, I didn't include those. So it's already, it's already cutting out some of that with the actual cost. But there are some fees in there that if a small developer came in and suddenly had to pay, you know, if you went with 100% of actual cost, it was $2,700 or something, or, you know, one of the, one of the, even 2,250 for a major subdivision preliminary plat. Remember, you just looked at Bethesda, it was four lots, but it triggered major subdivision review. And they did have to pay the $1,500 plus $25 per lot, but they did not pay $2,247. So it's a, it's a consideration. In the end of it, yeah, if you were, if, if the council were to say, you know, 75%, 50% or go through them and say for certain things such as, I did not even give you at this time the full list of everything because I just thought, let's, let's focus on the concept first. My desire was to talk about the concept, talk about the concept of actual cost versus fees, and then let you lead me where you want to go with this based on your comfort level as a council. Because coming in with too much information and too much in my opinion, I didn't think was a good place to start. I hope you're patient with that.
And one that just struck me because it did come up, but in this conversation around certain activities and things, I know the HDC fee, at times it has been discussed in the past. There's been an interest in kind of keeping that, I'll say low or achievable because everybody's interested that the downtown buildings actually get maintained and upgraded where appropriate. It's recognized that those are in many cases, small entrepreneurs, some of them own the building and from which they're retailing from. But there has been very real discussion around unconscious decisions not to necessarily try to capture 100% of staff time or anything relative to a certificate of appropriateness in the downtown area for that very specific reason. Because what, what happens at the point at which it becomes super expensive to do what sometimes is a very straightforward, and we're in a better place now than ever because we do have administrative approvals versus those that go to the full board. But at the point at which it becomes expensive to do what seems like the obvious, people just don't ask and you instead get in situations of looking for forgiveness instead of.
COA minor works and COA major works are our lowest cost recovery on here. On a COA minor work, we're only, our fee is only recapturing 16% of our total actual work done. And for a COA major work at $250, costs us $1,200. We're only recapturing about 20% of our costs with that, to your point. Yep.
Okay. I got a, just like a question and a, oh, find where I did it, and an observation and religious statement. So when you're talking with the folks about fee schedules and everything, I just want to be clear that it's not just these fees that impacted, it's the process. So when we're sitting here with engineers and traffic engineers and attorneys, and that's all cost that adds to the cost of housing. So it's easy to look at this and say, well, that's not much, but it's, the process is also expensive. And then two, I noticed on the major subdivision, roughly half of the hours are planning board and council related, preparing for that rather than working with the applicant. And I didn't get into the neighbors or anything, it was just everything that was related to planning board preparation or council preparation, I added those hours up. It's roughly 50%. And then finally, unrelated to any of this, the multimodal grant that I think was like, do you remember that, the multimodal grant that was February? Did you touch on that a while ago? Or it was the DOT folks that talked about there was some grant that's usually in March or February?
Yeah, oh, that was on the comp plan was, was to actually, we were going to work on the NC DOT multimodal planning grant and the, it has not come up yet.
But didn't they say February, March?
So what, last year, the application window, the announcement was made of the application window in like mid-February.
Right.
Mason, who has been tasked with, if that pops up, because you approved that list, he's going to be the one writing the application for the grant. He starts watching it. And as of last year's date, it came and went, and he contacted them, hasn't heard back on whether or not that grant is going to be a thing or not.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yeah. Yeah, we do spend a fair bit of time getting ready for attending and following up paperwork afterwards because there's always, neighbors are anxious about something, applicants are anxious about something, about something that happened last night at the meeting. The morning after the meeting, staff spend the most of the following day just putting out fires, taking care of paperwork, making sure things, I's get dotted and T's get crossed. It's, it's fairly labor intensive, there's a lot going on behind the scenes, yeah. So.
When you're going through that process and looking at how many hours are spent on different processes, processes, how are you going to say it? Did anything stand out as, for your old department, things that you felt like you were spending too much time on or? Yeah, get rid of us, we take the most time. No, yeah, if it's, yeah. I mean, I just, if that, if that kind of stuff comes up where you feel like it's a process that is not as important to the public, but we're spending hours and hours on it.
Define bureaucratic for me. I will say.
That's where my words are.
Yep, no, that's okay.
No, that's fine.
And I will say, it is, it is my truthful opinion, over the years, we have already scalped out a lot of stuff that we were doing that didn't make a lot of sense. We just looked, you know, like, why are we doing this? We don't need to do this. We've had efficiency gains, small efficiency gains such as, rather than planners going up, rather than planners, this is the truth, when I got here, we used to take signs, we would cover them with tape, we would rewrite the new public notices on that. We'd be doing that in the office, you'd have two planners at $50 an hour making these signs. Wait, wait. Well, okay. So at, and then you driving them out to the site, posting signs, we stopped that. And then the signs would fall apart, we'd have to go back out to the sites. And now you're at three or four site visits to monkey around with the, with the signs, okay? Well, we stopped doing that. What we did is we got these real nice signs, metal signs on a T-post. Our friends in utilities go out and post them for us because they're already out and about anyways. And everyone looked at that and said, that's way more efficient. They're already out there, they can already do that while they have, they have a sign shop where they make signs, it's, it's easy. So that's an example of something we started doing three years ago, four years ago-ish, that was a pretty significant efficiency gain. I will say, every one of these, when I was putting in a number, I thought to myself, what's a reasonable amount that we spend doing this? Well, you know, yeah, I mean, I might help that person with this because there's all kinds of stuff that goes into this completeness review. We also spend more time now at completeness review than in the past to spend less time down here. So that's an efficiency gain.
So you're constantly looking for those things?
Hyper aware of it.
Yeah.
Because we know that council is hyper aware of it. And I tell the council this every time we meet, more than you realize, we hang on your every word every time we get together because we're looking for, what do you care about? What can we do to reflect what you care about now, this month, this year, et cetera? And so, yeah, we really do. I, we have those conversations regularly. Remember, I mentioned Fieldwire the other day because we were looking at, they were, coming back from the field and putting PowerPoint presentations together to give to the applicant? I was like, man, this is killing us. What, what other options do we have? And that's when we got with Tony and did Fieldwire. Gene knocked out two site assessment reports today with Fieldwire in minutes when he got back to the office. Yeah.
Okay, good.
I guess the only overall concept, I know we need to move on. You've spent so much time, like that is a lot of time.
Yeah.
I, I would like to just benefit from that. So like in my head, I'm like, well, let's, we know because you've done it, let's try to have our chart reflect the annual cost. But then I'm like, okay, but then do we tell you, oh, but only collect 70% of it? Or only collect, this is our fee, but you're only going to collect X percent? I don't know how to back in to that part of it after we have, that's a whole nother conversation about the cost of recovery. But if we don't try as best we can to set the fees to what we know they actually are, then, I don't know, then this was, I mean, this was helpful, but then sort of not beneficial.
You know, when you look at this, it comes down to a question of, is this, is this, these tasks, when you read them, and as an example of one, are these tasks and this time that you probably, just being familiar as you are with the process, you can look at some of these numbers and go, oh, yeah, I can think of ones where they've spent more time than that, and I can think of ones where they probably spend less. Is that fair to charge the developer? Because that's the public policy question. What's not a fair question is, if this is the actual cost, how much more can we charge than this? That's not okay. State statute is like, nope, that's abundantly clear. School government says it's this or less. It's this or less, whatever you want to subsidize. And that's where the policy discussion comes down to, what do you feel is the benefit to the public? Because with considering all the other work we do and all the other overhead that the public is already then paying for, so the public's automatically going to subsidize a bunch of this with, with just the, those other costs.
Yeah.
I, I kept my numbers, I told Brandon this a while, I kept, I think after we had that last conversation, I kept planning director time very minimal. Like I thought, yeah, throw in a half an hour for talking with this. I mean, most projects, especially if it's a planner one doing this task, I'm overseeing that a lot.
And the other reality of this is this, these charts are very specific to the planning department. Depending on the permit you're talking about, everything from my office to the fire marshal to James and engineering, I mean, that, none of that is even contained in here, yeah.
TRC is in here, it's one of the ones for.
The TRC activity.
No, no, actually, for site plan review, because for a TRC, for a site plan submittal, our office charges and keeps the fee. Previously, therefore, none of the money that goes to those, and, and they charge fees for inspections that we go out and do inspections, we don't charge fees for inspections. You see what I'm saying? So when we assemble the TRC and the meter is spinning with engineers, fire, I assigned a rate for town engineer, talked to James about their, you know, their budget. Yes, this one is just major subdivision preliminary plat, there's another one in there for site plan review, I think it's on the fold-out chart I gave you. Site plan review is on there. There's site plan review major for bigger projects, site plan review minor. And a change was that we used to have site plan re-review for minor and site plan re-review for major. And what I learned was, if we're doing a re-review, because re-review start, you start charging fees after the, after the second review. If we get to the third, fourth and fifth review, our costs are about the same because there's obviously a problem and it's not getting fixed. And actually, the amount of time we put into it starts to go up because they're just not, something's not clicking and we are in hyper, like, like problem solving mode of like, what's going on? Why are we on the fourth submittal and this isn't getting resolved? So there's no real difference between bigger or smaller site plan reviews when you get to third, fourth and fifth submittal. The fee is still lower for sure, but I'm just, there's just not a huge difference because there's obviously a problem going on that we're, we're having. We're, we're all rolling up the sleeves with technical issues and trying to fix it.
So the site plan review, the first one, includes two potential visits, like two reviews. And if they don't get through it, the, through those, if it's not done, those two ones, those two times, gosh, I can't talk.
An extra copy.
Then you have the fee of a site plan re-review. Is that, and then if you have to go out there four times and five times and six times, is that still under the same one-time fee of the re-review?
You charge a re-review fee each time, each submittal after that, yeah.
Okay.
And that's, that's again, that's just one of those things where the meter, we're got three different entities looking at it, multiple staff, we're going out to the site again, we're meet, we're taking phone calls.
But they're paying it every time you'll have to go out there.
Resolving stuff one-on-ones, yeah. And they don't usually balk at that because they get after two, you know, like, yeah, we're, we keep doing this.
Yeah.
It's not, that's not usually a big deal.
Okay. Thank you for the amount of detail you put into this.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was my pleasure, I was happy to do it. And would you like, how, what would you like to go from here from data? Would you like a copy of that spreadsheet? And I can send it to Reagan, he can send it out to the group.
I see head shakes, I guess, yeah. And then.
I tend to trust your, your spreadsheet, and I don't know that I have to have a copy, but this is an amazing reflection of your brain, and I thank you for that. And I think I need to think a while about what, where I stand on fees. I think, yeah.
It's a difficult policy choice.
Yeah, I don't really feel like I can, and I think that we need to kind of bat that one around a little bit and figure that one out. It seems like, but gosh, what a lot of work, thank you.
I do want to say that, yes, I did a lot of work on this sitting at my computer, but Jessica helped me a lot with this in terms of just bouncing ideas off because I would come up for air and say, how does this read? And she'd say, well, don't really get this or recalculate this. And, and, and that was really helpful because when you're deep in the weeds like this, coming back up, you know, you need that sort of outside perspective. So thank you, Jessica, for that.
Yeah. Thank you both.
Thanks, guys.
Before we move on to our next item, why don't we take a quick break? I know that my pro temp, Peyton, needs to be out of here by six, which I think is a good goal for us all to be out of here. But let's take a, a quick five-minute break just in case we all need to come up for air. But let's take a quick five-minute break, just in case we all need to come up for air.
Sad kids, they'll miss their activities.
All right, I'm calling our meeting back to order. We're down to our last item under the council updates and discussion, which is NCDOT US-15501 utility relocation agreement.
BJ, if you wouldn't mind pulling up that PDF I sent you earlier?
We have town engineer James Mickle here.
Yep.
Hiding behind someone the entire meeting.
I was here the whole time, and Brandon saw me. This will be real brief. Wanted to come to this body just to bring this up because we have an agreement and a budget amendment coming up, and it's an $800,000-plus budget item. So, we didn't want to just throw that on consent, having never seen it before. So, but, I think everybody is aware, DOT has the 15501 US-1 project, they've started, you've seen them out there doing the clearing work. With that project comes a number of water and sewer utility relocations that are a function of, you know, redesign of storm systems, changing where curb and gutter fall, a number of things. And per North Carolina general statute, the town, since we are encroaching in a DOT right-of-way, we are responsible for a portion of the cost of those relocations. Based on our population, our share is 25%. So, that's what you see in that agreement. The detailed estimates were broken down in there. BJ, screen's broken.
All right. Maybe you can flip that.
So, the majority of the $818,000 is actually on the water side. There's about $156,000 that's sewer-related. We'll have the budget amendment broken down by those two items when it comes before you, but...
This is all stuff that's underground and we have no choice, we can't make it look any better. It's just, it is what it is.
Correct, yeah. We don't have really much say in the matter. You know, of course, we did a lot of work with DOT on the front end to try to minimize this, which DOT, of course, wants to work with us because it's 75% their cost also.
Sure.
This work is all done? No, no, this is work to be done still. DOT won't release the contract until we actually sign the agreement. So, this is a map, we just pulled this together, give everybody an idea, you know, US-1 here on the left, 15501, sorry, 15501 on the left, US-1 on the right. Red is existing sewer, blue is existing water, and the kind of neonish green color are the areas where we're doing the actual relocation work. I just want to kind of give everybody a visual to see how spread out this work is.
Can I ask you a question that's probably going to make you not very happy with that I ask it?
That's okay.
Is there any possibility to bury power lines at the same time that you're burying utilities?
There's absolutely that possibility if somebody other than Duke is willing to pay for it.
How much does it cost? If you're already, if you've already pulled up the ground and it's exposed...
It's not that simple, yeah.
So, it's not like you've dug the hole already?
The old figure was $1 million a mile, and I'm sure that has gone up quite a bit. And the challenge, and I absolutely love the thought process on this because I've gone through the exercise myself, the challenge in this instance is, let's just theoretically say that we were willing to pay the bill and get Duke to do it. DOT generally isn't very excited about having their contractors coordinate with the Duke contractors, and you run into delays. DOT does not want a delay on their project as a result of Duke's contractor being delayed in the burying of a line, if that follows.
Okay. Okay, well, I appreciate you at least letting me ask it.
Also, great idea.
Unlike where we...
I mean, frankly, that's a very common discussion across the state with these types of projects. A lot of municipalities would love to see DOT or whoever's the controlling entity require the electric utility to go underground, but the question always comes, who's going to...
And the other complicating factor in this instance, we're paying for this because it's our water and sewer lines. You'll note, if we put a zoning map overlay on that map that's on the screen, an awful lot of this project's actually in Aberdeen. So, it's not even power lines in our jurisdiction to be involved with.
So, the cost would be the cost less, less the cost of, because they have utilities to move as well, correct?
Yeah, so, Duke, Piedmont...
That would come out of it. It'd be the delta, most likely.
Again, if we were to go down that avenue, yes, Duke has a cost to move the overhead electric further out of the road where they're required to, things like that, you know...
And then they have avoidance from having, for having to do whatever they're going to have to do, if they don't bury it.
Yeah, but, again, the cost difference between overhead versus underground is radically different.
Yeah, I get it.
You know, 10x type.
They're already paying to move it?
Yeah.
Probably, only, I would think relative to where that power is located, there's not a lot of it to be moved. Maybe where some of the turnaround bump outs end up being, but remember, these, the biggest challenge, as I understand it, and correct me, James, where we ended up having to move a lot of this line, it's because of curb relocation and stormwater issues. If you think about where those poles are, they're already at the back of some of the existing right-of-ways. So, they're not necessarily affected by this project, I don't think, unless you get one of those turnaround areas.
I haven't seen the full DOT utility relocation plans, which include all utilities, not just water and sewer. So, I really don't know the full extent of what Duke has to move. But what I do know is that in certain cases, DOT has to pay for Duke because, you know, when US-1 or 15501 originally existed, they were much, much smaller, and the parapoles very well may have existed on private land that was encompassed by DOT right-of-way over the years. And in those instances, DOT has to pay Duke to move those lines.
But, so, somebody with the DOT would know?
Yeah, they would know that. And I'm not saying that's the case in this, I just know that on other DOT projects has come up and is, you know, can be a very significant cost.
Going to bury it, we're all for it. Don't hear me saying otherwise, it's just...
One, James, I know for the popular street, we paid extra, we didn't have to, to upfit a line. Is this not that opportunity? It looks disjointed and...
This is all distribution, small diameter lines that are just, they're in the way of need for...
This is not main transmission.
We're not upgrading anything, yeah, there's nothing like that. This is simply replacing in like.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we were going to see something...
You'll see a budget amendment, and then this, the agreement that's in your packet for adoption through your March meeting.
Yep.
Would you mind reaching out to NCDOT and asking if they are having to relocate any Duke power lines, just so that we have the information?
That's no problem.
Where were you considering, US-1 and 15501, or just 15501?
I mean, so, so much of this is in Aberdeen, I mean, that part is a, is an issue. But if they're already doing it, maybe it's not something we can do this time, but maybe we talk through the process of what that would mean logistically, financially, so that in the future, it's an option. Or, maybe the parts that are in Southern Pines could be changed.
Everything we're looking at is Southern Pines.
Well, yeah, this is not the full project extent, this is just what impacts us.
Right.
Yeah.
Where's the, so, that is all Southern Pines?
Utility lines. What you're actually going to find is that on some sides, in some sections of that, one side of the road may be Aberdeen and one...
Okay. I was thinking all that was higher up.
That's the new valve, and that's sheets and valve, yeah, sheets and valve.
I will tell you, there's something jarring about going from downtown that everyone loves and is beautiful and has tall trees. I mean, besides the fact that they cut the trees, which is a heartache already, but you, even before they cut the trees, you drive from old US-1 Broad Street area onto US-1, and the number of power lines you can see is a completely different feel. And it's, if that's the kind of thing that we could have some control over, it would change, it would change how Southern Pines feels everywhere.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay. Yeah, just let me know if they are, if they're having to move any.
Yeah, I'll reach out, they should have a set of plans, so...
That one, that one, that one.
Just a quarter mile, okay.
Per mile.
We'll see, we'll see.
Well, I appreciate the call. Saving work that you've done with NCDOT up to this point on this project. Is there anything else you want to mention to us?
That was it.
Okay, great. I look forward to seeing that adjustment on the, the financial adjustment. All right, moving over to council roundtable.
So, my packet has Parks and Rec Department information with it. Does anybody else, it has to do with fees, and it's not on the agenda, but I didn't know if it got added and then the agenda didn't get, so, I have fees and trips and large gem and what the rent is. Pass it around to Reagan if you don't mind, I don't think we're supposed to...
Yeah, somebody print something out today.
Okay, there you go.
You might have got somebody else to print out.
Okay, awesome, well, hopefully...
You know what this was, is in one of the sections, there was a link that you could click, and this was the link.
There it is, okay.
What happened when you clicked the link? I just printed it.
Okay.
Now you don't have it.
Well, thank you so much, thank you so mu, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Okay, great, thank you, Beth. I appreciate you.
All right, I'm going to attempt to get us out of here at, now you have it, you've got the printout, you're good.
Thank you, thank you, it's great, it's awesome. Anyone who wants to peruse that is welcome to, see me later.
Roundtable's out.
Do you have anything?
Only question I have is, have we, the section of north or east Broad from Massachusetts to Illinois?
Ah, survey finally is back. Mr. Greve has reached out to Mr. Harbor, that's all been within the last week to 10 days. Correct me if I'm wrong, BJ, I don't know if you've heard anything back yet, I hadn't seen anything, but...
I actually have heard back, and it's, there's a little bit of a chicken and egg thing there. He's saying, what does the town want to do? And I think, if I'm honest, and I'm, he's thinking, what does the town want to do? What is the town willing to pay for? And then, the town is reaching out to him saying, what do you want to do? What are you willing to cooperate with us to do to improve the property? So, there's going to need to be, my follow-up, my next follow-up with him will be, okay, let's feel each other out here a little bit about like, there's benefit to you if we improve this area, there's benefit to the town if we improve this area, how can we come together and come up with something that, and how do you feel about the parking on-site? How do you feel about all those different questions, so...
Parking, stuff, or parking, or you talking about tree, street trees? What are you talking about?
Okay, so, we're talking about out in front of Harbor Place, right? Okay, just to make sure we're like, oh, no, I'm talking about somewhere else, yeah. The street out in front of Harbor Place laundry...
Need to do sewer work.
Yeah. So, that area is devoid of trees, it's a parking lot that is a very 1970s, 1980s auto urban layout. Yes, and it, the survey confirmed that a good, that a decent portion, roughly of all the parking spaces that face the street, the front third of all those parking spaces roughly are in the town right-of-way. So, then everything, you know, so, so, the questions become, how do you get some trees in there? How do you get some streetscape enhancement for the lowest possible price? But yet, whatever the town puts into it, he's going to benefit as the adjoining landowner because it will be nicer, but he may need to give up something in terms of parking. So, that's all the points of the negotiation, if you will, or the discussion about, in other words, I'm assuming, I'm operating on the premise that the town isn't going to go in and say, okay, here's X amount of dollars to improve all this, wow, Steve Harbor and your, and your siblings, you know, your property just got way more valuable.
Well, we were just talking about street trees and the sidewalk, but, but the, the area between the sidewalk and the back of the curb on that side of Broad is the same as the area between the back of the curb and the sidewalk on the other side, where First Bank office is.
And I think the issue right now is...
Because we don't know where to plant the trees without getting into his parking lot a little bit because there's a power line, correct?
There's an encouragement parking lot, the strips between...
Yeah. The pervious area is, is, there's not a lot of place to put in a, a street tree with a 10-foot minimum width plantable area.
But there is a tree that he took out at some point, or a bush.
And there also is, they had built a parking lot on the right-of-way.
Like, probably 50 years ago.
So, adverse possession, we just lost the attorney from the room, but adverse possession has probably happened, yeah.
Now, again, the...
I don't know if it can against...
Everything I'm saying here, and, you know, is just based on the premise of there's a few touchy subjects, you know, we don't want to go in and say, hey, you're on our right-of-way, so you got to pull all that asphalt out of there so we can plant some trees.
California, isn't he?
There's a gentler touch, my understanding is that's the, that's the dialogue.
I think he's in California.
And the gentler touch, by the way, is not just solely for his benefit, it's also, hey, look, this is going to be, it's going to make this whole area nicer. His most recent response to my email was, like I said, I emailed him saying, if you got any ideas, shoot them my way. And he emailed today saying, no, a couple days ago, he emailed saying, sure, I got ideas, what do you guys got for ideas? It's like, that's little dances going on.
That's a general question about that area, I didn't know that was all happening, I hadn't been over there in a while. I know back when we did the one-way in the low-hanging fruit parking, that block was the next lowest hanging to put the diagonal on the railroad side.
Yeah, the Appearance Commission, it's something that they had brought to my attention on, something they wanted to work on. And because the sewer repair work that had to be done, the sidewalk was torn up anyways, it kind of started the whole conversation about, while it's torn up and we're trying to make it look nicer, where does the line end? What is ours, what is theirs? Yeah. There's one trashcan on the corner.
So, this is last October, so this is a little bit dated, but that's, that's what we're, that's what we're dealing with there. And, and the problem is, putting a tree right in here, or putting a tree right in here, isn't really going to work because it's, you know, there's too much impervious surface nearby. So, the question, and the property line runs, actually, the property line comes straight from this building, comes straight across, and roughly, when you look at the survey, it takes the front third of every one of these parking spaces. And so, the question will probably come down to something in the ballpark, conceptually only, of putting in a, you know, using one parking space or two parking spaces to expand this out, putting something in there, still having some of this parking, possibly this parking becoming parallel, adding parallel over here. Those are the, those are the nature of the give and take, you know, we'll put some parallel parking on the street to make up for the parking spaces you lose here, and this will become parallel, we'll put in a curb, because we have to have some vertical separation to protect the trees we're going to plant from the cars, there has to be a curb there of some sort.
Or at least a parking curb, what happens on the other end?
If you put parallel, we couldn't do the diagonal on the other side, or is there enough room for both?
So, in, in the attempt to keep costs at a minimum, this curb is unlikely to be relocated because, because the, once again, we're trying to get the maximum beautification with the least possible budget, and so, whatever infrastructure is there now, how can we work around that with minimal disruption to get the trees that are the intended outcome? And so far, what that has looked like is bulb-outs that go into his parking lot, in which you can plant a tree that will survive, has a high likelihood of surviving, with a curb around it protected from F-150s and F-250s like mine, and the, or cybertrucks, to protect it from cybertrucks. See, the cybertrucks, though, have so many sensors on it, cybertrucks won't run into anything, so, yeah. So, so that's, like I said, not, not pulling up the curb, not pulling up the sidewalk that's there and moving it, because there's obviously a sidewalk there, that's these, so...
This point of information is, have they built their parking lot on the town right-of-way?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
What about diagonal parking on both sides of their parking lot? The internal parking lot?
This aisle width right here is probably wide enough to accommodate that and get a little more parking in here, and then have those bulb-outs, have the parallel, the 45-degree parking, work around that, yes. And cost-wise, just amending that parking with new striping is a minimal cost.
Okay.
The street is kind of waiting, the street striping is kind of pending on that, too.
Do you know a law regarding adverse possession and town right-of-way properties? Can, can town right-of-way property be taken by adverse possession? Or Bill, do you know?
I would think you, I mean, that right-of-way's been in place for a long time, I don't think you can, because it's, it's pretty common for lots to go to the street even though they don't own that.
Yeah.
I cannot imagine that the adverse possession could take the town right-of-way, but I kind of just...
Yeah, okay.
I would, I would say there are plenty of underwriting factors, don't worry about something.
Right, okay.
Also, please understand, I'm saying all this based on staffs working on a project, trying to come up with the best design for the least amount of money. I'm also sitting here talking to people who are, so it's like, no, really, if you want to make it beautiful, like, there's all kinds of ways to do that.
Appreciate you guys at least walking down this road with the owners to see if there's anything you do. I'm going to let you talk, but I'm going to be brief.
Two seconds.
Okay.
In the essence of time, not time that, but in this project, realizing that we have somebody that lives in California, he's got siblings, we've got, this is going to be an ongoing back and forth, I don't know that he really knows what he wants or what he thinks and what he wants, he's probably not wanting to pay for. Why wouldn't we staff go ahead and come up with a design, a proposal that works for us, that we agree with, and then...
He's, and he's, he's in Southern California, too. Do we know whether or not his home has recently burned down? Do we know anything about what's going...
Yeah, he's in San Francisco, I think, yeah. Yeah, he's in San Francisco, I think, yeah. So...
I think if staff wants to come up with something, along with, I think Appearance Commission had already talked about some options, too.
They have had some comments on this, so they want to put some planners and trees and stuff. So we'll obviously try to pull that, too, right, Jessica?
Okay. Okay, cool.
Thank you, guys.
Does Bill, Bill, do you have anything you want to say at roundtable?
I do not.
No.
You just need to go.
You can pass me.
You got anything, Deborah?
So I want to know, you mentioned, you gave an oblique reference to the tree ordinance, and it may not be impacted by the legislative bill. Should we go ahead and pass the tree ordinance at the next meeting and then swing back around if we've done something? Does anybody have a sense of what should happen there? Because the tree ordinance had been pretty much hammered out, and we had met with success.
Did you say it was not going to be impacted, BJ? I'm sorry. I think I must have...
He wasn't sure, yeah. It's not as clear, yeah.
Yeah, there's three things. There's, they're on a spectrum of clarity when it comes to Senate Bill 382. Character districts, no way under current. Landscaping, probably could be tweaked to be made to work. And tree protection ordinance, because it's a process, not so much a design standard, probably is going to work.
Okay. I've been told that Senate Bill 382 is going to be updated.
Okay.
The chances of Southern Pines alone being included in one of the local bills is not looking good. I think they felt like it needed to be a countywide. And the bills, as they're written, they didn't feel super confident about them passing anyway. But everybody is upset with 382.
The amendment, you mean?
They're not amendments, they're local bills.
Right, okay. So they're going to repeal and...
Which, BJ, as I understand, the reason for the local bills is because it didn't look like the statewide change was going to fly.
Yeah, I can only imagine how dynamic this situation is, but, you know, and who you hear from and the rumor mill, et cetera. But yes, the NCAA, the word that was given out to the entire group was that the Senate leadership was not really eager to amend it, but the House leadership was more eager. But again, that could change day to day, as you all know better than I do.
So...
On something. So we're not frozen in time zoning-wise.
Sorry. So what's the, what's the problem if we go ahead and pass it at the next meeting? What's the worst that can happen?
That we have to revisit, well, I guess that there's an appeal and we go to court over it.
Right.
Or that as soon as they update it, we've got to update ours again anyway, right?
I don't think so.
I mean, potentially, but again, relative to the read on the preservation ordinance, always subject to how they update it, but it's not as likely as if we were to do that with one of the other two.
The tree protection ordinance just doesn't create non-conformities with regard to existing development.
Right.
What it does, it just sets up a process, you know, and a requirement for future development. So therefore, that process, if you haven't gone through that process, it doesn't create a non-conformity.
Right.
Future processes, then that process is...
It doesn't downzone. It doesn't do anything that's prohibited. So I wonder if we went ahead and passed that. Worst possible scenario is, we're told we can't have it, and then we wait to see what happens with the legislative bill and come back and take our second swing. But I think everybody was pretty excited about the tree ordinance. I mean, I think it's a crowd pleaser.
Well, Cameron was also excited about downzoning their ETJ to Tenerife lots. And now we've got Senate Bill 382. So, you know, I don't know what, there's a cause and effect, but it seems like we want to play, play smart with the things we're doing to make sure that, that we're not...
Yeah, I think as a process, I think we'd be safe to do it. I think, I think, I would ask that we put it on and approve it next meeting. Why not?
Another thing to consider, I don't know what you're doing with the tree ordinance, but another thing to consider is, it's one thing to have the sack which has passed it, have to go back and review something and potentially pass again, but if they're actually taken according to it and we're exposed to pass it, that's another thing to like tangle. And that is more complicated and...
So your, your advice is hold, then?
If we think we're going to get some clarity in sight, which I think we will...
I think we have to.
...because of how many people are upset.
Okay.
If it's not something that's absolutely pressing...
Okay.
It makes me sense.
Okay. All right, let's hold then.
Okay, cool.
Sounds good.
I'll put it back on the agenda, but we will anticipate, based on that, we'll put it back on the agenda, but we'll anticipate another continuance.
Okay, thank you.
I would also offer in credit to BJ and the planning staff, knowing the thought process that is in that ordinance that hasn't been adopted, there already, as applications come in, where some of those things could be integrated, and you just saw it a little bit with the Bethesda subdivision and asking that the trees along the front be left to stand as a condition above 10 inches. They're already integrating some of the thought, lacking the ordinance, so I don't, I don't feel like there's a giant...
Noted.
...thing being missed right now.
About 100%.
That also relies on consent by the applicant, but I get it, but I thought, okay, if that's not going to impact, then let's go for it. But thank you. Thank you for protecting me from myself. That's great. I love it.
I've got one more thing. I should have written it all down because now I feel like I can't, I can't remember the details of it off the top of my head. James is gone, I can't thank him, but James came to our MPO meeting, which I appreciate him showing up and speaking on behalf of Southern Pines for some of our planning. There is money at the MPO level for, what is the actual term of the money? It's not, I know Greenways is a part of it, which is kind of trails, but it's like a...
It's a carbon reduction fund, yes, or funding.
And so money could be spent for things like Greenways or putting in charging stations.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. And the MPO has asked the surrounding, the member organizations to come up with ideas so that the MPO can basically grant that money. It would make sense to do it in a place that includes more than just one town, such as extending the Greenway on Airport Road, what? To Whispering Pines, towards, probably in the other direction, towards Pinehurst. But if you all have any other ideas of where you feel like money can be spent, it's not a huge amount of money, it's $100,000 to $200,000.